From today's hearing, just checking off the table on the left. Good afternoon, the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development now reconvenes this hearing. In accordance with the open government law, notices were sent to the public on Thursday, March 5, 2015, and again on Monday, March 9, 2015. For the record, today is Thursday, March 12, 2015, and we are coming back in to this hearing that we recessed earlier, and we are back in at 2:03 this afternoon. The committee will hear and accept testimony both oral and written on the following items. First, we will have the, at the request of the individuals who are going to be confirmed today, or have their hearing for confirmation today, we will have the nomination hearings for Mr. and former Senator Anthony C. Blas as Director of the Department of Administration, Ms. Catherine Kikigi as the Classified Governor of Guam Employee Member of the Banking and Insurance Board, and Mr. Ben Anthony Rages as a member of Guam Cockpit License Board. We will also be hearing testimony both oral and written on the following items. Bill Number 7-33 introduced by Senator Rodriguez, an act to provide for a hazardous pay differential for the employees of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center in unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty working conditions by adding a new subsection 86112 to Chapter 86, Title 10 Guam Code annotated. Bill Number 11-33 introduced also by Senator Rodriguez, an act to provide for the healthcare professional pay plan category in the Government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and reinstate the prior pay plan rate for these positions and mandate a reassessment of healthcare professionals' salary ranges so as to be competitive based upon national standards. Bill Number 27-33 introduced by Senator Uggan, an act relative to recognizing that public employees of superior ratings in fiscal year 2002 were not compensated for meritorious performance in accordance of provisions contained in subsection 6203, Title 4 Guam Code annotated, authorizing the application of the Mayor Bonus Program for fiscal year 2002 and providing for such payments. And lastly, we have Bill 46-33 also introduced by Senator Rodriguez, an act to add a new subsection 6235 to Article 2 of Chapter 6 for GCA relative to providing a pay incentive to government of Guam line agencies, the Office of Public Accountability, and the Guam Department of Education employees who have obtained Certified Public Accountant, Certified Government Financial Management, Certified Fraud Examiner, and Certified Internal Auditor certifications pursuant to recognize national standards to preserve the government of Guam's ability to recruit and retain such professionals. And that is our agenda for the remainder of today. We will go ahead and begin with the nomination of former Senator Anthony C. Blas as Director of the Department of Administration, and for his nomination, we have signed up to testify, Senator Tony Lamarena, Senator Joanne Brown, Mayor Rudy Matanani, and Senator Carlotta Leon Guerrero, if you can please join us at the table this afternoon.
She's not.
On her way. Okay. I don't know who to make go first.[280.14][280.14](Laughter). Okay, whenever I can figure it out, I always start from left to right. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and start with Senator Tony Lamarena. Senator.
It's a high tech. When we were senators, we didn't have the on/off button, so. Senators, Chairman Senator Mike Snickless, members of the committee, my name is Tony Lamarena, currently the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission. I come before you today to testify in favor of Tony Blas as Director of the Department of Administration. I've had the pleasure of working with Tony since the administration of Governor Joseph Ada, when he was Director of PUAG at the time, I was Director of CAHA. And Tony, from the get-go and working with the government of Guam through the years we've served in the legislature, he's worked at GIDA, he's worked at DOA, BBMR, and other positions within the government of Guam. Tony has proven to be a true public servant. The years that I've had the experience of working with him, and more importantly, as a senator, some of you, I think one of you up there served with us in the legislature, no, two of you, know that Tony's heart is for the people of Guam. And I really think that we should continue his service to the people of Guam for the betterment of Guam. It has always been my pleasure and my honor to have worked side-by-side with Tony. I myself have been in public service over 25 years. And as I continue to work with Tony, I can see that his heart is truly to serve the needs of the people, and I hope that you find it in your hearts to also take him into consideration in confirming him as the Director of Department of Administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lamarena. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm also here to testify in favor of the nomination of Senator Tony Blas to serve in the position of Director of Administration. I know it was not too many months ago we were actually here, and that was the last hearing I came to testify in favor of his appointment to BBMR. You know, as former Senator Lamarena had relayed, Tony has tremendous years of experience on both sides of the aisle within the administration, and certainly his term in the legislature serving to the position of Vice Speaker. There's no doubt he has the years of experience and the dedication and drive for public service. I've known Tony, at least worked with him, I've been related to him, I think, since I was born, but I've actually worked with him for 27 years now. Talk about counting the years. It's gone by very quickly, but in working with him as far back as the Ada Blas administration, when he was the Director of what was then referred to as PUAG, certainly to the work that he did as one of the young and up-and-coming members of the Guam Legislature, back in the day before our tenure in the 23rd, he was there in the 22nd, and he was the new wave of leadership that we were looking forward to, and we certainly followed in his footsteps when we had the opportunity a term later to come in and serve with him. Tony is extremely bright, he's extremely dynamic. In spite of challenges that he's faced with, I think he's overcome many of them. I don't think everyone has the opportunity or chooses to do that, even in challenges of adversity. I think Tony's worked very hard to still come out on top. And I'm very pleased to be here to support his nomination. I hope you give him fair and favorable consideration, because I think he will continue to do well for the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Mayor Matanani.
Good afternoon again, senators. I am here again, and I thank you for, you know, listening to us, and I'm here in favor of the nomination for Senator Tony Blas, Mr. Tony Blas, for leadership in the Department of Administration as Director. I've known Tony Blas since before he was a senator, and up until now, he's still the person that I've known him in the beginning. He goes out of his way to make things happen, and he's a people person, and he's a good leader, and he shows that by being helpful with the people of Jiggo, and that's what I'm here for, is to ask for your favorable outcome to please nominate, I mean, you know, agree that he's the best for the Department of Administration. He's gone out of his way to help my constituents and the problems that they have fairly, fairly. And I hope that you can favorably confirm him for Director of the Department of Administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't, Ms. Leon Guerrero, Senator Carlotta is not here, so I guess we'll go ahead and move on. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for this panel? Vice Speaker Cruz.
Just one question. Senator Lamarena, you're currently the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission. And if memory serves me right, within the last couple of weeks, the Civil Service Commission has issued an opinion stating that they no longer have, that they don't have jurisdiction over all the grievances for the competitive wage issues that were before the Civil Service Commission, is that correct?
Primarily what the Commission ruled in their hearing was that classification and compensation is the jurisdiction of the Department of Administration as mandated by law in 2868, therefore leaving no jurisdiction. So that's the reason why the Commission ruled that.
Have you discussed this with Mr. Blas about assuming the responsibility that the Civil Service Commission could not take because it didn't have jurisdiction?
We have not yet discussed it. My, and the reason we have not discussed is my feeling is that, or what we're hearing is that there are some of the employees who are actually taking it to the courts, so you know, this time it's still an active case.
Before the cases came to the Civil Service Commission, had they, as per the grievance procedure, gone through the Department of Administration before they came to you?
I believe what they did was they filed grievances, and they went through their steps within their respective schools, and then we entertained their grievance.
Did it, before it came to you, did it go to the Department of Administration for action? If memory serves me right, and his resume is correct, he was the Director of Administration at the beginning of last year when, I think, when the Competitive Wage Act was?
I'm gonna have to check my files, Senator, to verify that, but my understanding is we normally don't entertain grievances.
Yeah, he was there to, did it go through Administration before it came to you, and were you able to see what they had done at Department of Administration before it came to you?
I would, again, because there were several cases, we do have several cases, I would have to check the files and get back to you on that one.
They've been several hundred cases, actually.
Yeah, well, there's still several hundred still pending, yes.
And I'm trying to find out whether or not Department of Administration, under his leadership and tutelage as the Deputy Director at the time until, according to this, February What action was taken by Department of Administration that you were able to find in the records to show that they had diligently addressed their responsibilities, having responsibility for classification, and you don't recall?
I would, you know, because there were several cases, not just one case, I would have to get back to you on that one, Senator.
Did you review any of them at all?
And in regards to, again, like, the Civil Service Commission, prior to hearing any grievances, make sure that they've exhausted all, because normally what we would do is return, or tell the employee to return back, and if, for example, they missed one of the steps, to go back to that step.
And so it would seem to me that before it got to you, it should have gone to Department of Administration. What action was taken by Department of Administration? Were you satisfied, as the Executive Director of Civil Service Commission, that in fact the Department of Administration had fulfilled its responsibilities, asked for 2868?
Yeah, I believe, I believe what had happened, Senator, was that the various employees actually had filed motions, and so the motions, the Civil Service Commission actually ruled on the motion that we had no jurisdiction on the motion.
In your review before you presented it to the Commissioners, did you find anything in there showing any action that was done by the Department of Administration fulfilling its responsibility as classification and salary oversight?
We did not see any action, or at least the files have so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Before I open up to any of the senators on the panel, Senator Leon Guerrero, I'll go ahead and offer you the opportunity to provide your testimony on behalf of Mr. Blas.
Thank you so much, and, Mr. Chairman, and senators, and Senator Tony Blas, and family members and friends, and I apologize for being a little bit late. This is the second time in recent memory that a group of us have been down here to stand in support of Senator Tony Blas to such an important position, and I stand here again. And I think that this is, having been up at the Governor's Office and spent four years at Adalou, I would say that this position is one of the most critical positions within the government of Guam, without a doubt. And I worked very closely for years with the Director of the Department of Administration, as well as key staff, and all along during that time, Senator Tony Blas was working alongside me. We were in fiscal policy meetings, and we were very fortunate at different times that members of the private sector that happened to be up at Adalou for different reasons and had background and expertise would also be able to jump in and give us their benefit of two cents in advice, and I always appreciated those times that you spent with us, Senator, when you just happened to be up there and saw the crisis that we would be in at the moment. And then I can also remember working closely with Senator Nerissa Underwood on making payroll. And there is a very dedicated fiscal team scattered throughout the government of Guam, and they depend on each other, they rely on each other. It's 30 years and plus of experience of knowing the government's budgets and finances, and what quarter the money comes in, when you're, if the government is ever going to break, it's going to be in the second quarter of the year. This is, this is the toughest time that the government has, and this is when all hands are on deck, all the creative stuff comes out to keep the ship afloat. So in times like this, on a position like this, I cannot stress how important it is to have experience, and that's what he's got, and that's what is needed. So I stand once again in support of Senator Tony Blas.
Thank you so much, Senator Carlotta. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions for this panel? If none, senators, thank you so much for gracing us with your presence and for testifying here today. Mayor, thank you too. We do have one other individual who just signed up. We have Ms. Benita Manglona from, as of now, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, who signed up also to provide oral testimony in favor of the nomination of Mr. Blas to the directorship. Benita, whenever you're ready.
Buenos dias, senador. My name is Benita Manglona, and I am here in support of Tony Blas's nomination as Director of Administration. Thirty-four years ago, Tony and I started our professional career as staff auditors at Pitt-Maurick Mitchell, now known as Deloitte Antush. You probably remember Al Pickens as the partner in charge at the time, and actually, Senator, your mother-in-law, Rose Coe, was working there at the time, bless her heart, she was a very good and hard-working employee. Tony was young then, smart, enthusiastic, and with a lot of energy. Three years ago, I had the opportunity to work again with Tony as my Deputy Director of Administration. Tony has not changed much, just a little gray hair, but wiser, and with much more experience and wisdom. It has been a pleasure working with Tony, and he certainly made my job easier because he gets along well with everyone and understands the work that needs to be done. I always look forward to seeing Tony early morning, whether it was at the old DOA building, and now the ITC building, with always a big smile on his face. Tony is part of the Department of Administration team in being able to complete a major milestone in the history of Guam, which was the completion of the first comprehensive annual financial report in 60 years, better known as CAFR. Not only were we able to complete it, we obtained the highest award any government could receive for two years in a row. It is called a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Tony has served in various capacities as PUAG Director, Senator, GIDA Administrator, Deputy Director of DOA, and Director of BBMR. He has been part of the fiscal team since the Camacho administration. His years of experience in government, bond financing, credit and investor presentations are all key elements of what the job entails. His wealth of experience, institutional knowledge, and understanding of government finance, and grasp of government budget has made him the perfect choice to be the Director of Administration. This is not an easy position to fill, and not many are willing to accept the call and the challenge the position requires. Tony is a well-rounded individual. He is a man of faith, integrity, a very good father, and an excellent role model for his kids. He has done an admirable job of being Mr. and Mr. Mom and Dad. I have never seen a father who is so passionate and concerned in ensuring his kids eat. He would always say, "I have to go drop food for my boy or my girl, it's my turn to cook at my father's house." Tony knows how to balance his work requirements and family needs. He is reliable, and always comes to work with enthusiasm and a big smile. I have enjoyed working with Tony for the last three years, and I don't know any better candidate that could head the Department of Administration than Tony. I sincerely hope this body will confirm his nomination unanimously and expeditiously. Tony is extremely capable to handle this demanding job. Sis, os masi.
Thank you, Ms. Manglona, for the great trip down memory lane. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Manglona? Vice Speaker Cruz.
Mr. Chairman, I, as was evident by the line of questioning that I had, this room is filled with people who are trying to get their salaries addressed because of what happened with the Competitive Wage Act. Three different groups, and yesterday we did another one with the truancy officers. And so I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask Ms. Manglona to remain until after Mr. Blas has testified, because I have some questions related to Competitive Wage Act and the implementation that I think either one or both of them we're going to have to respond to, and I need to ask.
Would your line of questioning also be extended to Mr. Blas when you?
Oh, yes. Actually, they were extended, they were intended for Mr. Blas, but now that Ms. Manglona has graced us with her presence, it's even better.
Well, would they be, would they be relevant to both? I mean, because I can understand if you have to ask her some questions as a follow-through to questions you may have for him when he testifies.
They are questions that relates to both of them. He was her deputy, and his name is on the letterhead of a letter that I'm going to be asking Mr. Blas about, but it was signed by Ms. Manglona, so.
I'll go ahead and allow you to go ahead and ask, pose your questions to Ms. Manglona now, and then after Mr. Blas provides his testimony, you can follow up with him and your questions at that point. Would that be satisfactory?
All right. It's fine.
Okay. I want her to be able to get back to work up at the hospital, too.
Okay, but, you know, Senator, with all due respect, I just want to say something that I am here in support of Tony Blas's nomination and not here for questioning regarding.
Oh, it's understood by Ms. Manglona.
You approached yourself before this committee to testify.
Yes.
And my questions, as they were going to be related to Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Would be as to the way Department of Administration has handled the Competitive Wage Act.
Okay.
Ms. Manglona, you've been the Director since the beginning of this administration, is that correct?
Yes, that's in February 2011.
And when the Competitive Wage Act was implemented in early February, or mid-February?
Yes.
Do you recall getting a FOIA letter from the late Senator Ben Pangilinan?
Perhaps I get, Senator, with all due respect, I receive a lot of FOIAS all the time, so I don't recall specific FOIAS.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have the Sergeant of Arms Two present this to her and ask if this would refresh her memory. Do you remember responding to it?
Like I said, I, this has been over a year ago, and I respond to a lot of FOIAS. If you have a copy of my response, perhaps I can look at it.
Okay. Give her one copy of that, please. It's dated March 5. Is that your signature?
Yes, it is.
And the date on it?
March 5, 2014.
And would you just read into the record your response to?
Buenos dias, senador Vicente C. Pangilinan. Buenos dias, senador. This is in response to your Freedom of Information Act requests dated February 21, 2014, in which you requested for a report on the annual salary amount by position as identified under the recently implemented executive pay plan. We have attached the report as requested.
And the list that accompanies that, do you recognize it? And on March 5, what did you report back in the FOIA response to the Committee on Appropriation was the salary for the Director of Administration and the salary for the Director of BBMR?
March 5 of?
2015, I mean, 2014.
Yes.
Your response is March 4.
Yeah, well, you're confusing me because you're saying 2015, and I wasn't there anymore.
Okay. I apologize. In your response of March 5, 2014, what did you report to the Committee on Appropriation? Was the salary that you, as the Director of Administration, was reporting for the, as the salary for the Director of Administration?
It's $90,000. It's at executive pay level W, step 1.
And what was the amount?
$90,255.
You were the Director of Administration when we were called into special session on November 21st, were you not?
Yes, I was still the Director.
You were part of the fiscal team that prepared the transmittal to us?
Which transmittal?
For the special session.
Not the actual transmittal.
All right. If I could just have, I don't know if I have an extra copy now. When we had the hearing on November 21st, was there a listing of what the salaries were going to be for the Directors and Deputy Directors attached to the bill?
I don't recall, Senator.
Because in the, in the transmittal letter from the Governor, from the acting Governor at the time on November 20th, he states the Competitive Wage Act was to... at the time on November 20th, he states, "The Competitive Wage Act was transmitted and received by Ilhasa Turanguahan on January the 15th, 2014. What resulted was a pay increase for the majority of classified employees. The salaries of respective positions listed in this bill will be paid with the appropriations for the fiscal year 2015." When we passed that 1-8, I guess it was, what was the salary going to be for the Director of Administration?
There was a range. It stops, it starts at step 1. The Governor has the latitude to give ranges, I mean, steps depending on...
And at the, at the hearing, the transmittal from the Governor just had one Exhibit A, which was just the list...
The positions.
The positions.
Okay.
But there was, do, was there ever any testimony that the salaries that were going to be paid was any different from the salaries that you transmitted to the Committee on Appropriation on March the 5th?
I don't recall, Senator, but, but I know that the Governor has the prerogative to give steps.
But when the legislature was considering it, we were looking, and we saw that on March the 5th, the salary of the Director of Administration was supposed to be $90,555, right?
That's step 1.
But that, but that was your response. Is that correct?
The response is that's step 1, yes.
But that was what was listed on that sheet.
Yeah, that's, that's the beginning of the step. It could have been, I mean, I could have easily put step 5, step up to whatever step, but it ranges in steps.
But if you do, just to call your attention, Ms. Manglotnia, to the document, there are actually references to a step 3 here and a step 2 here. There's two step 2 here. So my, my assumption would be in line with what the Vice Speaker's talking about is that this document that was transmitted was basically an attestation that these were the expected amounts that were going to be applied to these respective positions. That's why some are at step 1, and then here the Civil Service Commission Director was at step 3, and here Public Works was at step 2, this it was at step 2. So it looks like they already factored in the steps when they, when they transmitted this. But I just wanted to clarify that for the discussion.
That was back in 2014?
March, the March 2014 document that you have there.
Okay.
So after, after the legislature passed the, the special session bill, what was the salary the Director of Administration was approved?
The salary that was approved, there's, like I said, there's a range.
What was, what was your salary?
$102. I got $102.
$102?
Yes.
But what we, what the legislature had in a March 5th transmittal was that you were going to be getting 90?
That was like, again, that was the salary level of step 1. But, but the Governor has the prerogative to, to assign different steps depending on the performance and the experience of each Director.
And was the legislature advised of the fact that the Governor was going to have this whole entire range when we thought that the salary was going to be 90 as per the March 5th?
My understanding is, you know, there, it's a salary range. There's a salary range there and...
Who else got $102,000 besides the Director of Administration?
Revenue Tax and BBMR, the fiscal Directors.
And the major management team at Adalup also got fairly sizable. How many of the senior staff at Adalup are now earning over $100,000?
I don't have that information in front of me, Senator.
But there are several of them, aren't there?
Well, you have the attorneys. I mean, they...
On March the 9th, on a website, Gov Guam Employee Salaries, besides the Director of Administration getting $102, and the Director of BBMR getting $102, we also find that besides the Governor getting the, which we knew as the legislature was going to be the $130 and the $110 for the Lieutenant Governor, we've now discovered that the two attorneys are either getting $110 or $106. Another member of the fiscal team is making $106. The Chief of Staff is making $106, and the Deputy is making $102.
So are you saying that they're not deserving of that increase?
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, was the legislature apprised of the fact that these were going to be the salaries? Was there anything in the attachment to the special session bill that gave the Governor the authorization to make such huge steps? I mean...
My, my understanding is, is there is a latitude in the steps in those positions.
And whose decision was that? The, the Governor, or was that your, your authorization? Who slot, who decided on the slotting?
Well, it's not, it's a team that does this, and, you know, they look at the performance of those individuals, I mean, those positions, and, and, you know, with, with everything that they have done in the last four years, they're rightfully deserving of the increase. I mean, talking about salary, I mean, salaries of attorneys. I mean, though...
I understand, but I'm just saying, for notification to the legislature when we were appropriating, were we advised that there was going to be six staffers, senior staffers getting over $102,000? That's just the base salary. That doesn't include...
Yeah, I can't answer for that, Senator.
And were we apprised with that one-page attachment that your salary was going to be $106?
Their, their original submission back in 2014, I thought that there, you know, it showed a range.
It, it showed a range, but it didn't tell the legislature what they were going to be appropriating, did it?
Yes, but, but it also didn't, didn't restrict the Governor from giving the range in salaries.
But the amount that you transmitted to us, the salaries that you notified us, March the 5th, was of what salaries were being paid to the Director?
Senator, that was March 5th, and this was now November. That's almost a year later.
But in November, were we, was the legislature notified that there was going to be this plan for a $12,000 increase for yourself and the Director of BBMR?
Well, like I said, there, there is a latitude that the Governor could give. We were here, you didn't, you didn't post that question.
And we were, we were taking the Governor on his word that what we received on January the 15th was going to be the Competitive Wage Act that we were working with, and that the advice that we had received from his then-Director of Administration notifying us that her salary was $90,000 under the new executive pay plan...
But, Senator, again...
What was your salary before March the 5th?
Before March the 5th, it was $88,900.
And so you got an increase?
Yeah, very minimal.
And then, in November, you got a $12,000 increase on top of it?
It, it went up to $102. But still, when you compare it to all the other agencies, it's still, it's a minimal increase in comparison to the magnitude of the, of what the, the position entails and the requirements, the, you know, the complexity of the position. And even, you know, I recommend that, that you probably do a study on, on the salary levels of the upper management across the government, and you will see a wide disparity.
And you and Mr. Bloss served as, as Director and Deputy Director for several months after the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act.
Up to June, because Senator, I mean, Director Bloss went to BBMR in July of 2014.
And between February and June of 2014, how many grievances that you and Mr. Bloss, as the, as the Director and Deputy, address as it related to the salaries that all the rest of these people in this room are concerned about as to whether or not they got addressed on the hundreds of DOE employees, teachers?
They were supposed to submit it in June, and they were still working on it when I left the DOA. It was still at HR being reviewed, and I don't have the total number. It was probably a couple hundred. That doesn't include the teachers.
And over those months, how, did you resolve any of the grievances?
They, they were, the Department, I mean, the HR was working on it. On top of that, they, they were working on a lot of other, other recruitment for GPD, and, and they were just shorthanded, and there's only a few people that could do those detailed technical job, I mean, reviews. So it's, you know, taking, it's taking a while.
And if I was to take your March the 5th transmittal response to Senator Ben, compare it to what the salaries were before March the 5th, and compare it to the salaries of March the 5th, 2015, would there be some very substantial differences between what we thought the salaries for the executives were going to be on, in March of 2014, and the difference between that and March 2015?
Well, there, there are differences. It's substantial. It's a matter of measurement, how you measure substantial, and, you know, it's, it's all about equity here in terms of upper management as well, and looking at the other government agencies. And, and like I stated earlier, it's probably wise to do a government-wide study and see where these level of positions...
Isn't that what we contracted the HAY to do?
Well, this is, that was done four years ago, and, and it has been four years later, and you have, you could see the difference...
And if I were to do a comparison between what the HAY recommended in 2010, what the Competitive Wage Act that was initially proposed to us in early 2014, and the Competitive Wage Act as it was finally implemented surprisingly at the end of 2015, would there be substantial differences between the three amounts?
There are, there are some differences, but, but then, you know, it, we had to take into consideration also the, the resources that's available to be able to increase those salaries, and there are some limitations, but...
Of all the confirmed positions in government, the Directors that are confirmed, not taking the senior staff at the, at Adalup, but just the Directors, did any other Director besides the Director of Administration and the Director of BBMR get a difference in salary between March of 2014 and March of 2015 greater than $12,000?
Maybe not.
I'll be releasing the entire set today, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I just wanted to clarify in line with his questioning. You mentioned that we haven't resolved any of the grievances yet because we don't have the resources or the, it's a complex...
No, no, no. Senator, what I'm saying is, is there, it, this, these procedures take time, because these are very technical, and we have, you know, not very many could do those reviews. And in, on top of all their daily functions that they have to do, the recruitments and that they have to, to work on, they have to do these reviews with the, the appeals and the HAY. So it, it's taking a while, and I have inquired from time to time, where are we? And, you know, the response is, we're still working on it.
I just, I find it a little troubling, though, that we, it's too, it's technical and time-consuming to correct the errors for the rank-and-file employees, but we were able to do the technical and time-consuming work to bump up the salaries as just illustrated by the Vice Speaker.
I, I won't say that, you know, errors or what. It's, you know, when, when the HAY study was done, each department had to submit their, their scope of work for each position, and, and if each department do not take, you know, that, that request for submission of what the position entails, if they don't really list down everything that that job is, what they do for that position, then they're not doing justice for that position. So it's not an error on DOA's part. Each department has to take responsibility, and then they were finding out during the implementation of the HAY that that was one of the issues.
But now it's DOA's responsibility to handle the appeal and to go through the process of fixing the issue?
Yes, I mean, they're, they're all working on it, because they got those information from the departments themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Manglotnia, for joining us today.
You're welcome.
I know it's always a challenge to come and talk about the numbers, but we're talking about people's lives and millions of dollars, so I appreciate you making the effort.
I understand, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Manglotnia.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and call the nominee up to please present his opening statements. Senator Bloss, I guess you can have an idea of some of the questions that'll be posed afterwards, so whenever you're ready, sir.
How often, Mr. Chairman, and Senators, for giving this opportunity to speak on behalf of the 33rd Guam Legislature, and also to give you my, my, my testimony on behalf of my confirmation for, as a nominee to be Director of Administration. Again, Honorable Chairman, Sen. Chris, Members of the Committee, and Senators, first, I would thank all of you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you today on my nomination to serve as the Director of Department of Administration. I would like to thank Governor Eddie Bosa-Cavil and its Governor Ray Tenori for believing in my abilities and nominating me for position, for this, for this position, and to the hard-working employees at DOA for the confidence and support of my nomination. The Departments that offices with the executive branch are primarily focused on providing core services to the people of Guam. The Department of Administration oversees the financial and human resources of 30 line agencies that employ more than 5,000 Guamanians. From cutting payroll checks and providing health and life insurance for our employees, to cutting checks for tax refunds for our people, to assisting departments and agencies recruit, train, and retain qualified employees, to providing supplies, materials, equipment, and services to our departments and customers, and to provide IT-related technical support, and to collecting payments and fees to assist in the funding for all of the above. Our department plays a pitiful role in the lives of our people and our government. The Director of Administration has a wide range of duties, responsibilities, and mandates. These responsibilities carry the weight of the life of thousands of Guamanians. Having said that, I believe that this, I am the right person for this position, meeting all the requirements to effectively lead the Department of Administration. I've, I have almost 30 years of supervisory, supervisory and managerial experience earned through the public and private sectors. Prior to my current position as Acting Director, I served in the following capacities. Of course, Director of Bureau and Budget and Management Research, Deputy Director of Department of Administration, I was the former Administrator of GIDA, Guam Economic Development Authority, and General Manager for Guam Waters Authority, or PUAG. Of course, I, I too serve as a five-term Senator, most notably as the Chairman of Finance and Taxation Committee in the 24th, and Chairman of Ways and Means in the 25th Guam Legislature. I was the Vice Speaker in, in the 24th Guam Legislature. My education, I hold a Master's in Public Administration degree at the University of Guam, Viva Tritons, and I'm a Bachelor's Degree in Management Accounting at the University of Notre Dame. I also, I currently serve as an active member of the Governor of Guam Retirement Fund Board of Trustees, and also, I'm an adjunct professor at the University of Guam. Any Director in a matter of his or her qualifications cannot fulfill the mission of an agency without a team of dedicated and experienced people, and I want to thank the hard-working employees of the Department of Administration. I'm very proud of the people in Division of Accounts, led by Kathy Keighley and Goody Rosario, the General Service Administration, Ms. Claudia Fargi, and Anita Cruz, and Robert Cornell, the IT, CEO, the Acting IT Head is Joy Manabusen, and Beniduc Kamacho and his hard-working staff as well. Of course, Division of Human Resources, Shane Nata, and, and his hard-working staff. IT, Human Resources, Accounting, and HR, these are key, hard-working people who have been working hard for, for, for the people of Guam. They work diligently to provide service to our fellow government employees... They work diligently to provide service to our fellow government employees and to the people of Guam. Their efforts have resulted in such achievements as the efficient processing of personnel in order to meet the many demands of government services as well as clean audits of financial statements, which has a direct bearing on the credit rates and interest rates. I know the former Director, Benita Manglotina, also made the announcement since, in 2012 and 2013, and of course, in 2014, we will all be, achieve the CAFRA Award. This is, for decades, the only territory who received the CAFRA Excessively Award was Guam, and people of Guam should be very proud of that. And that goes back to longstanding, I guess, work and dedication to the people of the DOA employees. The DOA budget, of course, our budget for now, just to speak in general about our budget, it's $10.2 million. 2016 budget request is $12.4 million, and of course, IFT is $140,000 for the large and numerous mandates that government has for DOA. Human Resources, again, they're doing, they're part to provide services for Human Resources issues as well as GSA, General Service Administration, Division of Accounts, and IT or data processing. But now, this is authored by Senator Tommy Morrison. There are many, many challenges that we have here at Department of Administration, and I'm very, very proud to have a team of hard-working people to assist you and to help you throughout this whole, the whole mandates and services to assist our people of Guam. I thank you for giving this opportunity, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you ask of me.
Thank you, Senator Blas. I first want to begin by thank you so much for all of your heart, your years of service and hard work for the people of Guam. You are a legacy public servant of this island and all of that service will always be remembered and appreciated. Before I begin, I did have some questions with respect to some of the data that we, I sent a letter to you about on tax refunds. But I do want to, just to, so that we have some continuity in the questioning, I'll go ahead and yield first to Vice Speaker Cruz so that he can continue in, on the track that he was on. That way, we can see the relevance of the discussion between him and the former Director as it relates now to you as the nominee.
Mr. Blas, you and Ms. Manglotina were the two that came and testified for the Administration on November the 21st, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And at that time, do you recall either one of you informing the committee that if the legislature had, were to pass the Special Session Bill, that you would be getting a $12,000 increase over what we were advised in November, in March of 2014 was the salary of the BBMR Director and the DOA Director?
I was not aware of the increase of $12,000 until the approval was done by the Governor and the Administration.
Thank you very much, because then that confirms the fact that you were testifying, you didn't even know that you were going to be getting that $12,000 increase. How is the legislature to have known that it was going to be giving you a $12,000 increase?
It's, again, as Director Manglotina stated earlier, this is a, this is a range that was approved on the CWA law. And, of course, the Administration has the, they can make the decision, and that's an issue that happens.
But when we passed the bill in February of 2014, and the initial executive pay plan went into effect before Senator Ben asked for the, made the FOIA request, you did, you both did get an increase at that time, did you not?
In 2014?
Yes, right after the CWA was, was passed and before we repeal the executive salaries.
As a Deputy Director, yes.
Yes, right. And at that time, you were aware that the, that the transmittal made by Ms. Manglotina on March the 5th stated the salary for the Director of Administration and the salary for the Director of BBMR was at 90, but miraculously, on November the 25th, somehow it went to 102?
It's a range that was approved under the CWA pay scale.
And we've now had a year since the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act. You've been both at BBMR and at Department of Administration in both Deputy, Acting, and Director of BBMR. When you testified before us in November of 2014 at the Special Session Committee of the Whole, you were very confident that we were going to be able to sustain this increase in the salaries. We've now had a year, a full year of the implementation. Though we were all retroed, we've now had a year of how much it's going to cost to cover all the executives and all the elected officials. Do you have a number or a sum of how much the, the salary increase have cost the government of Guam and how much I should be budgeting to, in the upcoming budget for the new increases for, as a result of the Competitive Wage Act, as we thought we passed it and as you all have implemented it?
I think the budgets speaks to all of that. I know we're, we're in the budget process right now and all the different, I guess, Department, Department requests were sent to the Bureau of Budget and Management Research and then, of course, forwarded directly to the Committee of Appropriations, your committee.
And when did you move from BBMR to DOA?
February 9th, February 16th.
So the transmittal of the budget was while you were at BBMR?
That's, that's correct.
So can you tell me, as the former Director of BBMR and now the current Acting Director of DOA, how much is the CWA costing the government of Guam with one year of implementation?
I don't have the specific number, Senator, but I can get it to you very soon. I can write this, I can, I can go back to my office and give that information and send it to you.
And, you know, when you were going over your, your resume, you have, as the Senate, as the Chairman put it, a legacy in, in the government of Guam. You've been around, you have served in this capacity as the Committee of Chairman of the Appropriation and Ways and Means. And you understand the need for the Chairman of Ways and Means, the Chairman of Appropriation to have complete information on how much these things are costing. And as Director of BBMR confirmed, and the Acting Director of DOA, and having served as the Deputy of DOA, you cannot tell me how much you have noticed over the last year the CWA has cost us?
I don't have the specific, I'm answering-
I'm not asking for the sense, I'm asking for a general range.
A general, well, it's, I guess, every department has an increase in personal costs, and that's, that happens in the budget request that we forwarded to you. I don't have the specific number, I can get the number, but I don't have it in front of me. But I can tell you that, yes, but we worked within the, within the budget parameters that were outlined by the Governor, and we forwarded to you. I know that all of us, we had, we had a ceiling and we followed the ceiling, and we worked within, with the resources that we have before you. And the increase in CWA was already included in the, in the budgets that we have, Department to request that we forwarded to, to the Chairperson Committee.
But neither BBMR nor DOA compiled a separate amount just so that you would be able to tell the Governor or the Lieutenant Governor or the fiscal team, this is how much the CWA cost us over the last 12 months?
Senator, you can see, every department has an increase in personal costs. It's all there. I don't have it in front of you, but I'm saying the budget has it.
I understand and I've seen that. And I'm just saying, if we were bringing you from the outside, I could give you some slack.
Yeah, but-
You've been at Department of Administration even before Ms. Manglotina, right?
Yes, I was a Deputy.
And so I'm just asking, shouldn't we have that fairly close at hand to, just a general, I mean, you know, even my colleague here is whispering my ear, it's 20 million. But what-
I don't have the specific number. It could be higher, it could be lower.
I mean, he can estimate, and he's not even the Director. Now, how much are you-
You're talking about all the departments and the increase in personal costs.
Correct. How much is the CWA costing us?
I guess, I don't have the specific amount. I can get it to you, but after this is done, I can get it to you and send it to you. I don't have the number in front of you.
I understand. You're coming here as the Director of Department of Administration?
Yes.
And how is it that you say that you're qualified, you're eminently qualified for this position, and you don't have at your fingertips how much this is costing the government of Guam?
It's an increase, actually, we use the CWA, every, every position has an increase.
I understand.
You want to, one of the comparison of the existing one versus the other, current and the future one. So there are three numbers that are involved, and we'll give it to you. I don't have it in front of me, but I said, give me the time to go out there and do it, I'll get it for you.
As the former Chair of Ways and Means and Appropriations, and as, having had both the deputy positions at DOA and Directorship of BBMR and now DOA, can you explain to this committee how the provision for tax refund is to be implemented?
Provision of tax refunds, again, last year when we did this, we, the last budget we did together as, the last fiscal year was 2,000, I mean, 125 million for the provision of tax refunds. And, and currently, the budget we were recommending is $118 million for the provision of tax refunds. And all of that, there's an interaction with, within the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service meeting. All of that has to do with the revenues and expenditures, and one of the components in interaction with the Committee of Ways and Means or Committee of Appropriations was this discussion on the budget.
Yeah, I understand. And I'm just saying-
And the budget process is always, we've always gone through this.
And how much did you actually, I keep trying to figure out which one's a more powerful position, DOA or BBMR, because it seems to me that DOA can't write a check unless BBMR approves or, or sets up the accounts, is that correct?
It's, it's, it's a process to ensure that we were able to, of course, to maximize our resources and to manage the resources.
Yes, and so how much did we actually pay in taxes, in refunds last year?
Actually, 2014, we paid something to 100, we paid, the provision of tax refunds was 120 some.
What was the actual?
And the actual is 153. So in 2014, we over, we actually, we paid, we had the opportunity, we had the research, we paid tax refunds, and that's what the taxpayers wanted, and they got it.
And I congratulate you and I congratulate the Governor and the Director of Administration. I'm just asking, because now as we're planning for 2014, I mean, for this, this current fiscal year, can you explain to me the original intent of the provision for tax refunds and how it's currently being implemented?
Well, in the interaction that we have, using the two, under your purview, the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service, the classified employees who are, were part of that, the review process, they made the recommendations to the Special Economic Service meeting, in which we're all members of that committee. And, and we go through the whole process of discussing, and intensive discussion on the review amount and, and the provision of our tax refunds.
And what is the provision supposed to be? Because my original understanding of provision for tax refund was that during, during the year, the Department of Administration is supposed to be putting into the trust account the provision for tax refund up to $120,000, $120 million. So that on January the 1st of 2015, when the first person files their tax refund on January the 5th of 2015, if they're to get a tax refund, there should be 120 million in the provision for tax refunds to be able to start paying that off, is that correct?
And this is a longstanding practice, we've done it in filing a tax, there's a DRT issue, the Department of Administration will file a tax return, they go to the comprehensive review of the returns.
But what is DOA and BBMR supposed to be doing? Are you not supposed to be under the provision for tax refund accumulating in a trust fund?
And we have, and we've been doing this.
And how much do you have so far this year?
And 2014, we should be very happy that we were able to meet the tax refunds and pay them.
And I said, I'm congratulating the fact that you could-
I know, I'm just saying that-
-fulfilled before the election the payment of all of the tax refunds for 2013. But what I'm saying is, my understanding is that besides paying all the tax refunds for 2013-
I'm very proud to say-
-there should have been also accumulating in a trust fund, an amount of about 120 million so that you could start paying off the 2014s immediately after January the 1st of 2015.
At the end of the fiscal year, 2014 and 2015, we, they advanced, to extent of about $33 million plus additional $10 million for the provision of tax refunds. And currently, we're very proud that we were able to pay, currently, under a status A to tax refunds today.
A total of how much?
This is, this is the second, the second quarter's going to end at the end of March, and we're very, I want to tell you, Senator Micah, that I want to give you the assurance that we're going to, we're paying tax refunds as the Governor has directed all of us. We will continue to pay tax refunds and pay in a timely manner. And I pursued it to the court earlier and the direction of our-
How much was supposed to be in the trust fund as of today?
I said, I don't, again, the number, we, I told you, in the interaction that we have to do, we have currently paid nearly $60 million in the first quarter of 2000.
And how much is currently in the trust account today?
At the trust account, I don't have the balance in front of me, but I'll get the balance.
How much should be in that trust account?
Well, we've advanced the tax refunds in the first quarter of 2015. We paid October, November, December.
How much is supposed to have been in that trust account?
We paid the previous ones, and we've also paid the current one, actually, January of 16.
What is the form, what is the formula and what is the process for determining the amount of money that should be in the trust account?
It's, I guess, we've all discussed currently, and we've, since we advanced it, we've been paying it, and now we're looking forward to-
What is the formula that should be utilized?
Whatever the percentage of the actual income tax refunds is, it's around 26%.
And have we set aside, have we, have we put into the trust account-
Yes, we've been-
26% as per the formula?
Yes, and we've been putting those, those funds into the-
Your, your testimony today is that, yes, you put in the 26%?
We've been paying, we've been paying pursuant to the, to the requirement. We've advanced it to the tune of $43 million.
How much should be in the trust account as of today? Should it not be about $36 million?
We paid all the tax refunds.
How much should be in the trust account as of today?
I don't have the specific amount in front of me, but you'll get it. I can get it to you, sir.
The Chairman sent you a letter asking for that amount.
I was telling you right now that we're-
And I would have thought that you would have had that number, because not only did he send it.
We have, we have paid all the tax refunds today. We paid 43, paid on the tax refunds.
And how did we arrive at the 26%, Mr. Blas?
26% is the percentage of, was the, was the actual amounts for income tax. You take a percentage and we- You take a percentage, and we've deposited those funds into the income tax trust fund.
And what two numbers are used to arrive at the 26%?
Well, this is a law that was authored by the Income Tax Efficacy Fund that goes back in the early 90s, early 2000s. I don't know the specific law. But nonetheless, again, I want to reiterate for you, Senator, that, again, we've advanced the payment of tax refunds pursuant to the law, we've set the funds in there, we've paid all the outstanding tax refunds, and currently, we paid as of January 16, status A.
Can you testify to the legislature today that the Department of Administration has deposited into the trust fund the requisite 26% of revenue collected to date?
We put the requisite amounts necessary to be current. We paid all the outstanding ones, the provision was 127 million dollars, we were able to pay 153.
That was for last year. I'm talking about for this year.
Yeah, I know.
For these five months of this fiscal year, the amount, you should know how much the amount, I mean, if I was taking you off the street, that'd be one thing, but you had both hats. How much should be in the trust account as per the formula?
We have been paying, we have paid it out completely, status A, through January 16, 2015.
But the provision for tax refund is supposed to be, that there should be enough money in there, that you could have already paid every tax, every status A tax refund, tax filing as of yesterday. But you don't have that much money in there. The deposits currently that went into the trust fund totaled about 16 million, and you paid all of that out, but you really should have had about 36 million dollars in there. Is that correct?
We have paid, we have paid, I told you, we have paid 43 million dollars in tax refunds, and the last quarter, we paid another 60 million dollars, we see, to meet the requirements of the Income Tax Efficacy Fund and law. So we're up to, we're up to, we're crying up to January 16, and you should be happy, you should be excited that we're paying tax refunds.
No, I'm just saying, yes, you are, no, I'm happy, I'm happy that you're paying it, but I'm just saying, it shouldn't be January 2016, it should be February 2016, or it actually should be March of 2015.
All the outstanding tax refunds were paid, were current. I remember, it's always been a longstanding thing to pay, and the commitment for all of us as public servants, we want to make certain we pay our obligations, our liabilities regarding tax refunds, and that's a number one priority, one of the number one priorities we have.
I'll let the Chairman continue his line on that one, but I sent you a letter yesterday.
Yes, I saw your letter.
And are you ready to respond to it as to what authority the Department of Administration and BBMR paid out 23 million dollars?
You're talking about the 2012 and the 2013 issue, and I think that, again, we go back to the response by the Director of BBMR, the Acting Director of BBMR, Joey Calvo, and we stand by it. I know that the whole...
No, I'm very happy with the response by the Acting Director of BBMR.
Yes.
It's the first time someone has honestly responded to my question on that issue, and has honestly responded to the question that was posed many times by the late Senator Benn. And had we received that response earlier, there may not have been a need for Senator Uggan to be introducing that one bill today on the rest of the meritorious increases. What authority was there for that, for those payments?
In the merit bonus issue, it goes back to, again, 31-233. This is a, that's a specific thing that tells you that we prioritize all unpaid prior obligations, including obligations for tax refunds, ready payers, and back pay for employees and other obligations resulting from judges awards pursuant to the...
I understand that I just sent the letter to you yesterday, so I'll give you time to respond to that, and speak to your legal counsel about it also before you send me the response. Because I am very happy with Mr. Calvo having finally admitted to us that those two amounts were paid. Because between yourself as the former Director of BBMR, and in your position as Acting Director of DOA, and your predecessor's position in that, the two have avoided admitting that, including your predecessor at BBMR, Mr. Rios. We finally got a honest answer from Mr. Calvo, and now I want to know, and I'll allow you to send it to me in writing, what the response to...
I'm happy to do that for you. And Senator, I want to add, we work together on this whole issue, and I know that you asked us on, for your request, about the information, the reports that you asked of you, we have given it to you at your request. And again, the relationship that we continue to have, because we have to, we work together, and again, this is all about giving, working together to deliver the services as required as public service.
When did you assume the position as Acting Director of Administration?
February 9th, I believe.
Over the last month, what discussions have you had with your HR department about addressing the need for Department of Administration to assume its statutory responsibility over classification and salaries, to address the hundreds of grievances that were filed?
Senator, we're very aware of the importance and the urgency of that issue, and we're working together with our staff, Shane Nata, and I have been working to ensure that we deliver the requests and the manages required by law.
Mr. Blas, when I asked the same question a year ago, asking your predecessor whether or not the Department of Administration, HR department, had properly slotted all of the GovGuam employees, and I wanted proof that it had, you very coyly, or you and your director, sent 30 boxes and said, "Look for it."
I thought you wanted the information, I guess, that you were asked of them.
And it was evident after that, that the Department of Administration had not, I repeat, not properly slotted the employees, otherwise there wouldn't be the hundreds, if not thousands, of grievances that have been filed since the Executive Pay Range, I mean, Act has been filed. Witness, a whole set of employees on this side insisting that their hazardous pay wasn't addressed, another set on this side for their salary increases, that all should have been addressed in the hay and the competitive wage. There should be no need for any hazardous pay, because that should have been included in it. But we now have, by department, one by one, this entire Competitive Wage Act is sitting on sand and it's falling apart, because it wasn't properly implemented by the Department of Administration, of which you were the deputy on the day that the Competitive Wage Act was passed. And so I'm just asking, when are you, what are you going to do to try to resolve this? And we've had a month now since you've been there. What discussions have you had with your HR department about addressing these needs?
I've been working with my staff on numerous, we have numerous issues, numerous mandates and numerous requirements, and again, we set aside our time to work on these things. They have incredible mandates as well, like GSA, like Division of Accounts, like IT. So, again...
And as you put it in your testimony yourself, you were the one that said, "The position of Director of Administration is responsible for the livelihood of thousands and thousands of government employees."
And we will continue to do that, Senator, we continue to do that.
I understand, but the thing is, is they're waiting. They're waiting...
I'm sure my people are working with all the departments, and again, there's numerous timelines, there's numerous requests, there's court orders, there's mandates, there's a myriad, with a very small group of people doing their job. And you have to, a new Senator, you should applaud and thank them for continuing.
I thank them, I just wish that their directors were more honest with me about what is happening. I know that the Division of Account has gone through and done what they've done, to try to do all the entries. I had been asking for the final report fiscal year 2014.
We're working this very soon, and we're going to give you the information that you asked of us.
And so you're admitting that as of this date, that amount...
There's a lot of reconciliation.
A lot of reconciliation with...
Information that we're working on, and we're going to give this information to you.
The initial draft that you have right now, what deficit do you show for the end of fiscal year 14?
Again, there's reconciliation, I'm very soon you get that number.
Is there a deficit for 2014, and how much is it?
Again, they're still reconciling, they're closing the books and all that, that all the information is going through, and you give a number very soon.
Are we letting time fly so that we can wait until another January, June the 26th, to find mana from heaven to take a deficit into a surplus? It's been four months...
Aren't you happy to be able to take care of all the necessary things that we've been doing for a long time?
I'm just saying, I just want an honest...
Aren't you excited we continue to pay tax refunds on time of mine, Senator?
I just want an honest response to all that's happening, all right?
Do that, the final form on it, Senator. At the end of the day, you're going to get the numbers that you want, and whatever the numbers that were completed in the reconciliation, and I understand what you're saying, I gave you the very inexplicable reports that you asked of us, we give all the information that we can give, we give it to you, and very soon...
And you're doing some major reconciliations right now, and I'm trying to figure out with the reconciliations, or even before the reconciliations, was there any evidence that there was a deficit at the end of the fiscal year?
Again, as soon as I get the final numbers, I'm going to give it to you for you. You're the first person to give it to you.
As the former Director of BBMR and the current Director of DOA, Acting...
And again, it's a reconciliation process.
You mean to tell me, you cannot tell me from the information that you've had, from having both of those hats on your head?
I can give you a specific number right then and there.
Not a specific number, I'm asking, was there a deficit at the end of FY14?
I hope we're going to get, we're going to get the number we always want, but I can't...
Was there a deficit at the end of 14?
As soon as, Senator, as soon as we're almost done, I can give it to you, and you're the first person I want to talk to you.
Was there a deficit at the end of 14, yes or no?
As soon as you're done, I'll give it to you, Senator, as soon as I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. I have to deal with him every day.
Very nice. I'm an actor, I'm a C, I'm a B, Senator.
You know, Mr. Blas, I really need you to appreciate the gravity of the situation, especially that I'm in as Chair. Because, you know, in my letter that I sent to you, I kind of illustrated very clearly the situation that I'm in, especially with having to deal with your nomination, and the situation is this, the law says that we're supposed to be depositing, the law says, this is law, okay, we're supposed to be depositing a certain percentage of income tax money into this trust fund, so we can have that money to pay tax refunds. Now, the law, as the formula applies to this fiscal year, says we're supposed to be depositing 26% of every dollar that comes in into this trust fund. So 26 cents of every dollar is supposed to be going into this fund. Based on all the information that we're able to gather that's publicly available, the amount that should have been deposited into that trust fund from the beginning of the fiscal year is 36 million dollars, 35.9 million. But the Department of Administration has only deposited 18.8 million.
Yes.
And so what happens is, because we don't have that 35, 36 million in there, because we're 12 million dollars short, 16 million dollars short even, we're not able to pay out that much in refunds. And so the challenge for me as a Chair with your nomination is, how do I move forward a nomination when there's a very clear law that isn't being followed? So if you can explain for me why we only have 18 million in there instead of 36, and if you can explain for me how we can justify not putting that 36 million in there when it's very clear in the law that we're supposed to?
Yes, and we did, 43 million dollars out of the tax fund refunds, 33 million dollars were paid in 2014, because we paid it off by the 127 million dollars, and then, of course, that's, we advanced that. And so, to date, in excess of the budgetary, precious tax refunds, we're 20 million dollars ahead in 2015. You know, Senator, in the first quarter, we paid 60 million dollars, on top of that, we've already paid out 33 million dollars in tax refunds, and over and above the provision of tax refunds. Again, this whole issue goes straight to the fact that we're paying income tax refunds, and now this is, we're very close to the end of the second quarter of the fiscal year. And I know that one of the things you're very concerned about, actually, we want to make sure we pay tax refunds very soon, and we're confident that we're going to get a major, major payment of tax refunds by the end of this month. So I know...
I think we're confusing two different issues here. We're confusing how much we've paid in the past with how much we're supposed to have available to pay right now, and in the beginning of the fiscal year, we're supposed to have, based on that 26%, 36 million dollars available right now for the tax refunds. And we only have had deposited 18 million. I have all the deposit slips here from the bank, and so the law says you're supposed to deposit those amounts into this account.
And the portion of...
And in each of these deposit slips, every single month, it's short from what the amounts are supposed to be.
And we advanced that, we advanced 33 million dollars over and above the provision of tax refunds.
There's no 33 million dollar deposit here over the last first quarter.
Look at the, we advanced it in September.
And the law specifically says the money's supposed to...
And September, we showed that we advanced, because we took care of the provision of tax refunds, that's done. And currently, we're current today as of January 16. So the whole concern about, for all of us, are we paying tax refunds? Yes, we've, and this is unprecedented, we have been paid tax refunds, and we're doing it now.
Yes, sir, I understand that...
And I know you're...
But I need to go back to the whole point of a nominee and a law that's not being followed. The law is very specific, Mr. Blas, the law is very specific.
We've been following up by pay, we advanced the tax refunds.
26% into this account, and it's not going into the account.
And we paid, and we paid tax refunds completely, that all those items that were outstanding, over and above 120, we paid it. We paid it to 33 million dollars, and on top of it, we paid under 10, and recently we paid additional 16 million.
Have we paid out 36 million dollars to the taxpayers for this current tax year?
No, this, I'm saying, this is, you're talking about the fiscal year, the fiscal year that we're talking about, the provision of tax refunds is 120.
What I'm talking about is very simple, Mr. Blas, I'm talking about what's supposed to be deposited into the account, so we can pay the refunds.
And we have, we have been deposited those funds into the income tax efficiency fund, and we've made tax refunds. And the whole point is, Senator, it's about...
I need to be very clear, Mr. Blas, okay? And I really admire you, you're a very nice man, but when the law is very clear that these deposits are supposed to be going in there, and you keep insisting that they are, but the bank deposit statements are saying that they're not?
We have advanced...
How am I, as a Chair, going to be able to move your nomination forward when it's not being, when it's not addressing the clear and obvious fact that what the law is mandating is not being followed, and now refunds are being paid out slower than they were last year? How can I move that nomination forward?
Senator, how can you not say that we're not paying tax refunds? We've paid out tax refunds completely, and as of January 16, we're current, and we paid it off, and we look forward to pay additional tax refunds by the end of the second quarter. And so, Senator, why, this whole issue is about making certain that there are peaks and valleys in all of this. And I'm telling you, Senators, for all of us at DOA, we want to make sure we take care of tax refunds as well, and actually, we advanced the tax refunds, and we paid it off, the provision of tax refunds, 120, we took care of that, and we paid the ones in the current fiscal year that's required for tax refunds. Currently, January of 2015, that, I guess, 2014 tax returns are being filed now. We paid, again... We paid, again, this is a record again for us, we don't usually pay tax refunds much later, but we charge to pay up to January 16. And you should be very proud and very happy that we're doing this for our people. And again, it's about doing our part, doing our due diligence to ensure that those taxpayers are paid the funds that belong to them.
We're supposed to have 36 million in the account.
We advanced it to 33 million, Senator.
Mr. Blas, you did not put in 33 million over the last four months.
We've advanced, the provision of tax refunds ended in 120, so right now...
In October, we had income tax, in October, we had income tax collections of 41 million. We're supposed to deposit 10, we only deposited 9. In November, this is the new fiscal year, we brought in 21 million.
We advanced in September.
You can't advance a future fiscal year with a past one, Mr. Blas.
Those tax refunds were brought into, we've been paying it.
The law says that...
You're talking about the provision of tax refunds, we paid 120, we took care of that.
I'm talking about the amounts that are supposed to go into the account.
We overpaid it and we continue to pay tax refunds in a timely manner. So the whole question is about, are we paying tax refunds? Yes, we're paying tax refunds.
The question is, is the nominee sitting in front of me following the law that's written and the amounts...
And we are following the law and we're paying tax refunds in a timely manner. And I'm certain by the end of this quarter, you're going to get more tax refunds to be paid for, that's the whole goal, is to ensure that the taxpayers are getting their tax refunds.
The goal is to make sure that the taxpayers are getting paid out at the rate that they're supposed to be getting paid out. That's why we have a law that specifies...
I'm telling you...
So if I can continue here, in November, we brought in 21 million in income taxes, we're supposed to deposit 5, we only deposited 2. In December, we brought in 40, we're supposed to deposit 10, we only deposited 2.5. In January, we brought in 34, we're supposed to deposit 8, we only deposited 2.
That's right.
And so between the beginning of the fiscal year up until February, we brought in 118 million, we're supposed to deposit 36, we only deposited 18. And the difference is the reason why we only paid up to January 16 and not January 17, January 18, January 19. And the reason why this law, and bear in mind that this very trust fund that we're talking about is the one that the Supreme Court issued a ruling on that said you cannot transfer money out of it.
Sure.
But now what's happened is the government, the government...
What type of tax refunds are you talking about? You're talking about the tax refunds that were filed in the division of tax refunds, we paid up all the ones up to 120.
Mr. Blas, the Supreme Court said we're not supposed to transfer money out of this fund, but now we're not even putting money into it, or at least we're not putting it in at the rate that we're supposed to.
And we advanced, we advanced 43 million, 33 in 2014 and we had additional 10 million and we're way, we're ahead by 20 million into fiscal 2015. So my question currently, these people just filed tax returns...
You know, we need to be doing for our people, we need to be very, very upfront with our people about what the numbers are and about whether or not we're fulfilling the legal obligations that we have to pay them, we're supposed to pay them at the rate we're supposed to pay them. And this business of saying that we have, you know, advanced this and paid that, but we're ignoring the fact that we're supposed to have deposited this and we haven't, and we're trying to justify it by saying that we advanced it, I mean, there is no deposit there to show those things. And so, you know, I'm really, I'm really, you really put me in a very tough spot here, Mr. Blas, because I need to move your nomination forward and at this point, until I can get documentation and deposit slips that show that the 26% is current, I'm not going to be able to move forward this nomination.
We advanced these tax refunds, you're talking about fiscal 2013, I mean, income tax 2013 and 2014, the outstanding ones, the provision of tax refunds happened and we paid it off completely. We advanced that and to 33 million in the current fiscal year. We're talking about the tax refunds, tax refunds in October, November, in the first quarter that you're talking about, those tax refunds are for, the tax refunds in that year. And people didn't file the tax refunds until in January of 2015 for the income tax 2014. So right now, we've been paying status A, I guess we've been paying tax returns currently and we're looking forward to, we'll get more status A and of course, and we're looking forward to the end of the second quarter, we'll be able to pay more tax refunds for the people who have been wanting. And it's all about doing and delivering our responsibilities and doing correctly for the taxpayers. I'm sure they're so excited, they're happy that they're getting their tax refunds. I'm going to do it and will continue to do that.
Just some other items as well that we're going to reconcile as we go through this. On the employee questions that were asked by the Vice Speaker, with respect to the appeals, have we adjudicated even one appeal so far that's been filed?
I guess I can ask my HR division and can give you some information.
Do you know if we've adjudicated at least one appeal?
I don't remember, I don't recall which, how many months have we adjudicated?
Do you know when the first appeals came in to the HR department on the competitive wage?
I just came here in February 9th, so I know there were some that were done, I guess recently and I can get that information.
Like maybe last year, it's been almost a year since we've had appeals filed and we haven't adjudicated one appeal since that time.
I can get that information for you.
And then I know that there might be some other questions from members of the body with respect to pay adjustments and for law enforcement and everything. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions for the panel? Senator Ogun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Senator Blas, thank you very much for extending yourself to our community in this capacity and honoring the Governor's request that in fact you serve in this position. I think you've really got a taste of the requirements of disposition in terms of sitting as Director of Department of Administration. And this is, this is something that I certainly hope that the audience and our people don't misread the line of questions because the reality is, we keep throwing out these terms of transparency and openness, but we need to ensure that our people understand where the resources are being allocated and how they're being expended. And that's a big responsibility that you have on your shoulders, especially in light of your confirmation. But, Mr. Blas, I will be, I have forwarded a FOIA request to your office and the only line of question that I will pose at this point in time, because you and I have worked in the past. And I appreciate the cooperation and the willingness to be able to not only work with my office, but you're absolutely right. When you mentioned that in fact you have some solid and excellent employees within DOA, my office has been in communication with them over the course of the last three, four months and they've been very, very helpful going through your office in that regard, with regards to other issues that had to be addressed. But my only question would be, when can I anticipate and the committee anticipate a response on those FOIA requests which have by law established timelines?
Yes, we received the FOIA request and I think we should be getting some responses to you very soon.
What is your definition of very soon, please?
I guess wherever the FOIA, we received that recently and I think just a few days ago...
You received it Thursday, Monday morning.
Yeah, I think so, I think we should have it by Friday or if there's additional information or extension, we'll crash with the extension.
And that's why in the letter also, I highlighted the additional timeline, if in fact it's required.
Yes.
But it's going to have to require extenuating circumstances. So please, I'm asking you to honor that because it directly applies to a proposal that is before this legislative body with regards to merit bonuses. It also directly applies to retro payment for our law enforcement officers who have been waiting for over six, seven months since the last incremental payment that was provided to them. And then it also applies to the civilian employees within the Guam Police Department who have had outstanding obligations. I have received from the Chief of Police the civilian component, so I await your copy and your response with regards to that. I take it that there are going to be similar information. But please, I'm asking you to meet that timeline so that the committee, in my case, my committee and my office can go ahead and proceed and work either directly with you or with the Governor's Office in addressing some of those obligations.
Within the timeframe, that's requested by yourself.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
And we'll work with you.
Thank you.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have questions, I just have a comment. Senator, Mr. Blas, for you to continue to sit there after the line of questioning, it just shows to me your determination to move forward and to continue the work of the Department of Administration and the people that are there sitting behind you, your family, for them to sit there through this, I wouldn't be surprised if you go home tonight and they say, Dad, forget it. You know?
Thank you, Senator.
You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised. But for you to continue to sit there and answer the questions and continue to go back and forth just shows your determination. And I look forward, I'm voting for your confirmation and you have my full support. Thank you.
Sis, mase. Don't criticize, Senator.
Any other Senators? Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, congratulations, Mr. Blas, on your nomination.
Thank you, Senator.
I know when you were mentioning IT earlier, I know you're referring to the Office of Technology and I thank you for your continued support and the team there. And as my good colleague, the Vice Speaker, who helped me get this off the ground from the legislative standpoint, to create the Office of Technology within Department of Administration, obviously, we all know that is a position of the CTO, the Chief Technology Officer, is to be confirmed by the Governor, I mean, to be appointed by the Governor, confirmed by the Legislature. And I know there's, I'm being assured that there are some candidates or a candidate that will be coming down very soon. My question really is, we know this is a newly created Office of Technology within the Department of Administration, how do you see your authority knowing that now this is structured within DOA over the CTO? Because when I'm hearing your, also seeing past correspondences, I kind of feel that maybe there's still some growing pains going through the authority vested in the CTO. And I just want to make sure as, I support your nomination.
Thank you, Senator.
Is that, I want to ensure that you have a clear understanding of Public Law 32-10 and ensure that there is a clear picture that, yes, it's built within DOA, however, there is a separate authority here. So what are your thoughts of the Office of Technology, Chief Technology Officer?
You know, Senator, you and I were, I guess, when you worked together in the administration and of course, when you became Senator, one of the first things you asked me was, can you please look at my bill, what do you think about my bill? And you think this is a good idea? I said, yes, it's a great idea and this is something IT, given the technology that's going on right now and the future, you want us to assist it and to get out of the age we're at and to go forward and to do the things that we want to do from the IT thing. IT is such a dynamic situation, so I'm committed to work with you, Senator, and to continue to deliver and give the, meet the mandates as requested by the public law.
Do you feel that this is how the way, as it's currently structured within DOA, do you feel it should still be structured there or should we proceed further in giving it its own autonomy away from DOA?
Well, it's really, it's the body that will ultimately decide. For us, we, you know, of course, under DOA, they're part of the DOA family, the IT, but there's lots of mandates. I know I just spoke to Joey Manus and Benin Kamacho and these guys are classified employees who've been there for a long time. They've been pushing and pushing to ensure that we, try to get out of the age we're at and to move forward. And so I know that it could be independent or not, for us, we'll do our part, but still under the purview of DOA, we continue to work with them and deliver the mandates as required by the public law.
Okay, thank you, Director Blas, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Senators? Vice Chair Torres? You're okay? Okay. Mr. Blas, you know, you're a senior statesman.
Oh, yes, sir.
Senator Rodriguez, all right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Senator, congratulations on your appointment. As we talked this morning, you know I support you, support your appointment. You know, more intimately, we've worked together closely with the health insurance negotiating team. And so I'm happy with, at least from a very short period of time, that you've been Director and overseeing the process. So, you know, you have my support and thank you very much for your service.
And I thank you so much, Senator, for your support, thank you.
Any other Senators? No? Okay. Okay, Mr. Blas, you know, you are one of our senior statesmen and I opened up the commentary period by acknowledging your service and commitment to our people and that remains the same. I think you also understand the nature of how we need to go about asking these questions and ensuring that what we've committed to our people in the letter of the law is being followed through with. And so this is going to be my commitment to you. Throughout the duration of your nomination as it's currently existing, I'm going to put all the resources of my office and fully make myself available to you. And if we can work together to figure out how we're going to catch up and make sure that the 26% that's supposed to be there gets in there, then we'll be able to, I'll be able to be comfortable in knowing that the resources are there for the tax refunds that are immediately to be paid and then we can, we can work towards moving forward from there. But I need to be able to look the people in the eye and honestly tell them that the money that's supposed to be there is there and I will work together with you between now and throughout the duration of your nomination to get that money into that account. That's my commitment to you.
Senator, we can work as a team to ensure that we deliver the tax refunds as part of our dual diligence to our taxpayers. Senator, I want to help you and I want to work together with you to continue to have this dialogue and to ensure that we deliver the tax refunds for our people.
I think what we'll do is, as soon as we can go back, regroup, reorganize and get our ducks in a row, we'll probably have a hearing together and from there we'll be able to exactly figure out where this 26% is and how we're going to go about catching it up so we can get these refunds paid out at a faster rate.
Maga.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Blas. We'll go ahead and conclude the hearing for the nomination of Mr. Tony Blas for the Director of the Department of Administration. Thank you again so much, sir, for being here with us today.
Sis, mase, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, I appreciate everybody's patience here today, I know everyone's here for a variety of reasons. Next on the agenda, we have the nomination of, I'll go ahead and hear Catherine Kikigi. Ms. Catherine Kikigi? Okay, we're kind of pressed for time because we are having the congressional address this evening and we have other people who are going to be testifying, so let's expedite a little bit. So Mr. Loggins, I understand you signed up to testify on behalf of Ms. Kikigi. You can go ahead and begin your testimony, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Senators. My name is Arja Loggins, I'm the Insurance and Banking Commissioner for the Government of Guam, Rev and Tax. I am here in support of Kathy Kikigi's nomination for a board member of the Insurance and Banking Board. I've known Kathy for several years, she's a CPA and that's what we need in our board. So my recommendation is to approve her nomination. That's it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Loggins. Ms. Kikigi, if you can join us up here, please? Just state your name for the record and you may begin at any time.
My name is Catherine Kikigi. I am an employee of the Department of Administration. Anything else?
And then any kind of testimony you have to offer with respect to why you'd like to serve on the Insurance and Banking Commission?
Can I just say, the disposition, there's nine board members in the Banking Insurance Board, there's three bankers, three insurance personnel, one lawyer, one government employee and myself. And that's what Kathy is here to fulfill, that position.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to say that I'm a long, longtime government employee, I've always been passionate about assisting our island. And it shows in my roots, my parents worked for Department of Administration, my sister is now the Senior Vice President of UOG, my other sister is a teacher. And I... My other sister is a teacher, and I also teach part-time at the University of Guam, so we're all a bunch of educators. And I like to, I think my strengths, as far as being a board member, is my passion to help this island. And this is my, you know, this is my island. And also my passion to protect the interests of our government. I have 20 years of experience in government of Guam, and I've seen our government doing so many, for the past few administrations, I've seen our finances going down, I've seen it improving, and I like to see it continue that way. And by being on the Board for the Insurance and Banking Commission, I think that I am excited, and I think it's an opportunity for me to protect the interests of the government of Guam. So I humbly request your approval to have me on this board. I feel blessed to be asked. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kikigi. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Kikigi or Mr. Loggins? Senator Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, you know, you've done, we've met on many occasions, and it was a real pleasure to see you.
Oh, thank you.
Every time we met. And, you know, adding this to your, the work that you're currently doing, do you think that you'll be able to still be able to juggle?
Yes. I had, I didn't, when they first requested me to be on the Board, I said, this was Friday, so I said, let me digest it over the weekend, because, you know, I know that my job could be very stressful, as you can all see my chink. And, you know, plus, I do teach part-time at a university, so, you know, at the same time, I don't want to sacrifice the quality of work that I perform at Department of Administration. But no, I did talk to Art, and he did say that we meet once every quarter. Maybe if it was more frequent meetings that were occurring, then I would humbly, you know, just turn it down, decline it. But I'm confident that I will have the time to provide, or do the best I could to represent the government of Guam.
Well, that's great to know, then. You know, I look forward to voting on your confirmation, and you have my full support. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
If no other senators, I have no comments either. Ms. Kikigi, thank you very much for stepping up and being willing to serve the people of Guam in this capacity.
All right.
The Insurance and Banking Commission is always a very interesting place to work because you see a lot of our big financial industries in there.
That's right.
And with your expertise, I know you'll be able to contribute nicely as a government representative, so thank you for being willing to take on the responsibility.
Thank you, and I look forward to it. Thank you, Senators. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for making the time. Next on the agenda, we have the nomination of Mr. Ben Anthony Rages as a member of the Cockpit License Board. Mr. Rages? Oh, sure. Testimony? The only testimony that we have today on behalf of Mr. Rages is from Mr. Mike Benito from Peles. Mr. Benito, you may begin at any time. If I can ask, we can expedite a little bit because we're pressed against time.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Bebe, Ms. Chamor. Senator and fellow senators, thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Mike Benito. I work for Peles Supermarkets. I'm here in full support of Mr. Ben Rages for his appointment on the Cockpit Committee. I've known Ben for 25 years. Our career paths have kind of mirrored each other's over that time. I know we're short for time. I have a lot to say about him, but what I can tell you is that he has an amazing work ethic, but more importantly, he has amazing loyalty, not only to the company that he's worked for, as you'll see that he's worked with us for many, many years, has had basically one job, but more importantly, the loyalty to the employees that work underneath him. There is a bunch of folks that have come on their own behalf to speak or to be here in support of Ben. He's an incredible teacher. Again, like I said, he cares very deeply about the employees that work underneath him. I think he would be a great member, and I'm very happy that he has accepted this nomination, and I hope that you will support him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benito. Mr. Rages, you may begin at any time. Just push the button on the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Ben Rages. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Ben Anthony Rages, and I appear here today as a nominee for the position of Member of the Cockpit License Board. I was born and raised on Guam, and I'm a resident from the village of Dedodo. I attended John F. Kennedy High School and graduated in 1982. After high school, I worked at JNG Peles and continued my studies while attending University of Guam. While working at Peles, I met and married my wife, Julie Matanani Cabales, from the village of Sinehanya. Soon after that, we relocated to the mainland, but after a year, we decided to come back home. We have been here ever since. Upon returning, I was hired by Peles Supermarkets and started there as a bagger, and with my past experience, allowed me to advance quickly to the different levels within the store. This includes the grocery, produce, and meat departments. In less than two years, I was promoted to the position of Store Manager, the youngest in their history thus far. Having managed three stores since has placed me in direct contact with employees, well, I'm sorry, with hundreds of employees and thousands of customers. I was able to work with the employees to ensure our goals were met and done. We solved problems together and worked to resolve issues that came up from time to time. I was there listening to thousands of our customers that frequented my store, and as a direct result was the increases in sales and profits every year. After 11 years of managing stores, in the year 2000, I was offered and took the position of the Meat Category Manager for all of Peles, where I oversee the entire meat operations of the company. One of my responsibilities is training the young employees to become the next meat cutters in our company, and I have four of them behind me right now. Another important part of my job includes developing procedures and policies that are used and followed in the store's meat departments to this day. I have three children, two boys and one girl. My eldest son is currently working for me at one of my meat shops, where he was taught along with others by me personally, of which many are still employed with us. My second son is currently a chef at Urban Solis Restaurant in San Diego, where at an early age, he had the desire to cook and got a lot of his firsthand information on meat knowledge that assisted him in his career for me. I am a member of the Engineers, Architects, and Surveyors Golf Club, a social club that in the past and still to this day donates proceeds from their tournaments to charity, most notably to Camel and Carrot Food Kitchen for the past three years now. A club that's predominantly Filipino, I am but one of four Chamor members and only the second to serve as their club president in 2013, after being in their club less than five years. I have participated in the Peles Community Foundation and helped paint at the Camel and Carrot Building about three years ago. I am and continue to support the Peles Kick the Fat Run/Walk Race, one of the largest 5K races on island, where proceeds, again, go to various charities throughout the island. Senators, it is truly an honor and privilege to be nominated, and I'm confident I can live up to your expectations as well as mine. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rages. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Rages? Senator Adam.
Yeah, Mr. Rages, I just wanted to thank you for stepping up to the plate and answering the Governor's call for the Cockpit Ward, and that, you know, all the activities that you have, I'm pretty sure you'll still be able to do your functions on the Board, wouldn't you?
Yes, sir.
That's great. And I think the biggest thing you've got going for you right now is that your wife is from Didiki, and that, I tell you, sir, is the number one thing you've got going with her, with me, so.
Thank you.
You've got my full, you've got my full support, and I look forward to voting on your confirmation.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rages, Hafay, thank you for being here, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We've recently met at one of the organizations that, yeah, that you're involved in, and I really respect a lot of those individuals in that organization. And so, you know, what I've heard during the ball that I attended, the respect and the admiration they have for you speaks volumes. And so, you know, you have my full support, and congratulations again on the appointment.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Loggins?
I guess I would be remiss if I didn't extend accolades also, but, you know, one thing about going through this nomination process and being able to present your testimonies, one thing that always stands out in my mind is, are the individuals who are behind you extending their support? Not only Mike, but also everyone in the uniform and those who are not in uniform who is in attendance, specifically just to endorse your nomination. And that says so much about your support of your employees, your continued support of the organization, and you also mentioned your outreach with Camel and Carrot, which is a tremendous nonprofit organization that's supporting our community in many, many ways. So I thank you for your service to our community. I thank you for taking care of your, I'll say, troops in the organization in Peles, but I also look forward to your contribution serving in this particular capacity, because anyone that steps up on a volunteer basis to serve our community in this arena certainly has earned my support, and I wish you the best in serving our people, because it really boils down to our people's agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Loggins. Any of my other colleagues? Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to look through your packet and make sure this doesn't impact Sumai Peles right down the street. But thank you for stepping up and wanting to do this. I know it's a, it's a, an honor to serve and provide and give back to our community in this way. I know the Cockpit is an interesting board to be on, and I know there's a lot of challenges to address there, so thank you for wanting to do this and help our community from your respect, and of course, providing us information that will help us make a good decision going forward. You have my full support. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
You know, Mr. Rages, your longevity at the company does definitely speak volumes about your character and your ability to not only perform at a standard that allows you to move up the ranks, but also at a level that inspires many other employees whom you work with, obviously. I mean, I think this is the first time I've seen Peles uniforms in the public here. I was wondering, I was looking at the bill saying, these are all about pay adjustments for government, not Payless.
I'll be honest, Senator, they surprised me as well when I came in.
It must be one of the greatest feelings, you know, having them, having them here for you.
They're a great couple of guys.
So I think, I think you're going to be a great addition to the Cockpit Board. I'm looking forward to what you're going to be able to contribute to the operations of that board. So thank you very much, Mr. Rages, for accepting.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator.
If there are no other comments or testimonies, we'll go ahead and consider the nomination hearing for you concluded. Thank you so much, Mr. Rages.
Thank you.
This will take us now to the legislation that we've, a lot of us have been waiting for here today. Without any further delay, we'll go ahead and get right into Bill Number 7-33, introduced by Senator Rodriguez, an act to provide for a hazardous pay differential for employees of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center in unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty working conditions by adding a new subsection 86112 to Chapter 86, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated. And at this time, I'll go ahead and yield the floor to the sponsor of the legislation for his opening statement.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, but also for hearing Bill 7-33. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee and general public, this bill really is to get Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center and DOA together to put together guidelines to reinstate the hazard pay differential pay for employees at the department. And, you know, precedent has been set. Between February 2000 and February 2012, employees were receiving this hazardous pay, and it was some sort of interpretation that was handed down, I believe, from the Civil Service Commission, that, and then it was administratively decided that this hazardous pay would now be withheld. And so this legislation moves this issue forward. I think also, if I can add, that the former Director of DOA had, for me at least, had explained it well, that during the hay, the hay group being here and, you know, with us adjusting the competitive, the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act, it was up to the departments to provide, you know, the descriptions and what needs to be done with their employees. And obviously, we're seeing that things weren't done the way it should be done. This is one example of that, where the hazard pay was not included in the adjustments of the salaries for our employees. And so what this, what this measure does is simply get both departments, mandates both departments to come together and put together a plan that would identify the positions that are truly in a hazardous situation, and then from there, move forward in ensuring that their compensation includes this hazardous pay. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. Testifying, we have Director Ray Vega, Ms. Miriam Carino, Jane, I'm sorry, I'm not able to read the last name here.
Jane Petry.
Petry? Okay. And Rose, Rose Min Sabuan. Okay, please join us up here at the table. Thank you. Thank you all very much for joining us. Mr. Director, I think you should let the ladies go first. We'll go ahead and start from the, from.
I wanted to request that they be speak first, because they are actually impacted on this.
There we go. We're on the same page. Thank you, Mr. Director. So I guess we'll go ahead and start from the far left, ma'am. Go ahead and just state your name for the record, and you may begin at any time.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Jane Petry. I'm working as a psychiatric technician in the department for 20 years. I was assaulted one time when I responded Ms. Miriam Carino during our daily rounds after the morning, morning shift. We do rounds every day. So I saw Ms. Miriam Carino was assaulted by one of our consumers, and then I responded to it. What happened is, instead of assaulting her, he, she turned around and pulled my hands, twisted it, and then I end up in GME at the time and wearing a sling. And after two years, I thought this was over, but I have a pain in my neck for, like, after the incident, I have that pain in my neck. And then I went to Naval Hospital, they do x-ray, they do CT scan, and they found out that my clavicle is also affected and was dislocated also. They told me to operate here, to operate it, supposed to be, but they cannot do it here. Instead, they're asking me if I'm going to go off-island to do it, but they said it depends on you, because the side effect is really bad, because they might touch the sensitive nerve in my neck, so it might end up I cannot talk anymore. So I told them, it's okay, because the pain is bearable, and then they just give me Motrin in case I have a bad pain, they can take that, 800 milligrams of Motrin. Thank you, Senator. That's it.
Thank you so much, Jane, for sharing with us your experience. Ma'am, if you can just state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Senators. Hafay, my name is Miriam Carino, Licensed Practical Nurse, one at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I have been working at the department for almost 26 years and have encountered various clients, some of which are physically aggressive and assaulted. I was assaulted multiple times in the past and ended up going to GME's ER for treatment when a client pulled my hair and bit my left thumb. There were times I was chased and physically hurt by a client while working at Medication Clinic. My coworkers and I are asking to reinstate our hazardous pay, because we have been dealing with unpredictable clients, and we work every day and uncertain on what may happen to us while at work. Please reinstate our 10% hazardous pay and make this as a law. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miriam. Rosemin?
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Rosemin Suguan, and I am a registered nurse. I have been working at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center since 1984. As a nurse, I encountered many patients who were verbally and worse physically assaulted to myself and to other staff in the Adult in Patient Unit, Children's in Patient Unit, and Medication Clinic. My worst experience was working a graveyard shift with one female and one male psychiatric technician in the Adult in Patient Unit. A male- A male patient woke up and became physically aggressive towards me. He approached me so quickly, and he was able to hold on me on my shoulders, post me, punch me in my forehead with his fist, which caused me to fall down, losing my balance and loss of consciousness. As I was laying on the floor, he grabbed my hair and dragged me across the floor about six feet. I attempted to get up, but he pushed me down to the floor. It took time for the two psychiatric technicians to get him off of me. I had a lot of bruises on my head and experienced extreme body pain due to the assault I received from this patient. I went also to G M H ER for treatment. I thank God every time I remember that if it was not for the two technicians in the unit, I could be severely disabled, or in one way or another, I could be dead today. Our area of work is dangerous, not every moment, but we can foresee the future and what assaults are forthcoming. If we have to sustain these types of assault, please give us compensation. Give us back our hazardous pay at the minimal rate of 10%, for which we were paid before. Please reinstate the hazardous pay. Please make a law that says we are entitled to this pay, so we don't have to keep fighting for hazardous pay and keep coming back in here. Thank you very much, and again, good afternoon to everyone.
Thank you, Rosemin. Director Vega?
Thank you, Senator Michael San Nicolas, for the invitation and the rest members of this 33rd Guam Legislature. And thank you, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, for introducing this legislation for the betterment and welfare of my staff. My name is Ray Vega, and I'm currently the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. First and foremost, I said thank you, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, for introducing this legislation in the last 32nd legislature. And now, current day, Chairman San Nicolas, for getting this legislation into your committee. My position and that of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center remains the same as when I presented my initial testimony last November 2014. Again, I would like to start my testimony this afternoon with a statement that Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center serve individuals who suffers from mental illness, behavioral health issues, emotional disorders, substance abuse addiction, among other clinical diagnoses. The fact that these are the people we serve, we cannot categorically say and in general terms say that they are unstable, unpredictable, combative, and violent. Individuals with mental illness and behavioral health issue per se are not considered violent, and only when there are co-occurring diagnoses, most especially when there's some chemical addiction involved, that they become unpredictable, combative, and violent. There is no disagreement that our workplace is deemed hazardous environment by the nature of the services we provide and the client we serve. Statistically, I think we're four times higher as far as hazardous environment in any clinical study. So that there's no disagreement that the, our environment is four times hazardous than any other healthcare delivery system. We provide a wide array of services, and a good number of clients are integrated into the community. We see them around, and some of them are really contributing members of our community, very productive. My point is this: Only a small portion of clients we serve can be categorized as unpredictable, violent, and combative. To address the issue of the hazardous pay and those who would be entitled to, and what is deemed unsafe and placement of my staff in personal jeopardy, and under what condition is not a straightforward and easy determination. Taking care of forensic clients, court-ordered services, and home visitation are good examples of an environment when we expose my staff to high-risk, unpredictable scenarios. The testimony earlier presented were mostly in the inpatient, but we also do community outreach, all the way to the far-flung areas of Talafofo, Bunis. So those are some of the examples of a hazardous, a change in the hazardous environment that warrants compensation. Admission to an inpatient facilities, which these three ladies have made mention, thus warrant hazardous pay, and depending on the intensity of service and severity of illness we provide. As the bill proposes, Guam Behavioral Health will work with the Department of Administration to come up with guidelines for the implementation of the hazardous pay policy that is fair and consistent amongst all the health worker at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. We're not just talking about healthcare providers, we also talk about maintenance, who would be exposed to hazardous environment from time to time again. Same thing with the security personnel. So I am in, I don't want to see this legislation fail. I'd like to work, but I'd like to make it consistent to all staff across the organization. Although there's no mention of the funding or appropriation, I'm asking the Guam Legislature to allow us to move forward and work with the Department of Administration to get a clearer, simple, implementable guideline on when and when, and when can we apply the hazardous pay. Some of our consumers, you probably would not notice, they're just like ordinary people we have. They go shopping, but that doesn't mean that they're combative, they're violent. We have level of services that we provide that can truly be categorized as very unpredictable, but I can tell you, not all of our clients are unpredictable. So I guess, in my thought, that's where we should have a clear guidelines on the implementation of the hazardous pay. Again, thank you, Senator Rodriguez, for introducing this again, and I would surely work with the Department of Administration to come up with a fair, consistent resolution to this hazardous pay. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Director Vega. Vega? Senator Rodriguez, would you like to, okay. Any other senators have any comments? Okay, Senator Adda?
Mr. Vega, did you say that you have, you have certain categories of, I guess you call it, customers? I mean--
Consumers.
Consumers, okay. That are categorized as, I guess, well, I guess to get to my point, the question is, it's one thing to pay the hazardous pay, but what other measures are taken to ensure, to better ensure the safety of the nurses who, you know, who interact with these patients?
Well, the, some of our consumers, Senator Adda, we have, we maintain residential homes. We have Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, depending on how, what kind of consumers they are. There are some consumers that are one-to-one, there are consumers that, and has to be in a structured residential environment, we provide 24/7. The whole intent for this residential home is for their eventual reintegration into the community. So there are level of care that would require one is to one, and those are probably the some of those consumers that are unpredictable in itself and may pose a harm and danger to themselves or to others. But as we go through the Level 3, we're in, they are now housed in a less structured environment, preparing them for the, for their eventual reintegration to the community, they are, you're probably not going to be noticed, some of them, sitting beside you in shirts, going with grocery. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm not sure if we can apply the hazardous pay based on, because I'm taking care of a consumer. There's got to be extenuating circumstances wherein that would require some, some kind of skills and make sure that you've got your eyes focused on everything. We have good, good consumers too, who are high-functioning, and they can, they can be as normal as anybody. So the challenge I have is, how do we apply the hazardous pay? Is it only based because I'm taking care of one particular client or not? That's where the dilemma of applying the criteria for the hazardous pay. We operate 24/7 residential homes. What comes to my mind is, when they are sleeping, are we going to apply the hazardous pay? And that's what I'm saying, it's kind of like, it's not straightforward. If it's kind of like, they are like in a structured, all of them are services geared to this, then I can say, "Let's apply the hazardous pay." I have no question or disagreement when we apply hazardous pay when we send them for, to give medication to out there in far-flung areas. Or we, when they are de-escalating, we call it de-escalating, when they are triggered and you could actually predict the violent and volatile behavior of this individual. It's just a matter of when, when to apply the hazardous pay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interject, but if I could, Senator Adda, too, I think, and that's why the bill gives you the latitude, you, you know, you would know, you know, what, when, and where, and what person now would be required, you know, who are directly exposed to the hazards. And so this is, the bill does, is give it to you now to make that determination with the O.A. I think Senator Adda was asking, what measures do you have in place now to ensure, besides, you know, aside from the hazard, that you're taking care of your employees? I think that's what I understood. So if you can assure us that you are--
To answer your question, we require all of our staff to undergo some training. You have the, called the verbal judo, wherein you don't, there's no physical contact. We also have the professional crisis management. Yeah, the professional, professional crisis management. So we have, we have trained our staff to reduce the physical contact so that we should be able to reduce any injury to both parties. Yeah, they go, they go on several training, and that is required of them every year. But, but that, in reality, that's, that's not really enough. We've had injuries regularly. So, so I'm saying is, the PCMA is not enough to really completely eliminate the hazardous event that's going to come unpredictably in some group, but not necessarily all across the consumers.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Mr. Vega, I understand that they were getting hazardous pay until 2012, is that correct?
That is correct, Senator.
In the interim, since then, it's been discontinued?
Yes, sir.
Was the hazardous pay supposed to be subsumed in the Competitive Wage Act?
I was told--
Was that, I mean, wasn't that, I mean, these aren't nurses in the pediatrics ward or in the nursery at G M H, like your last job. We know that everybody that's over there either is, can, has possibilities of being aggressive or assertive. And so it would seem to me that all of this should have been calculated into what their salary ought to have been, because we know that they're applying to be psychiatric nurses, not nursery nurses at G M H. And so consequently, that difference should be already in the salary, not, we, you know, we know that from 12 to 3, when, when they're up and walking around, that yes, this hazardous pay, but when they go to sleep, it's supposed to stop, but we're not going to take into account the fact that they may have a nightmare and jump up and beat up one of the nurses. It would seem to me that there's, it should be already taken into account in their, in their salary, and why isn't it if it's not?
I don't believe that there is a Department of Administration H R representing here, but I was told it is embedded in their job description. However, the guideline on the hazardous environmental and physical pay is when the environment changes, where in they're now exposed to a different kind of hazard.
But the fact that it's embedded assumes that that, they know that they've, they've taken a position at behavioral wellness, not pediatrics at G M H.
I understand that, Senator.
So if you've been told that it's already embedded, then why is there a need for an additional amount? It would seem to me that's already there.
Because--
It's understood that there are psychiatric nurses, and it should, their salary should be greater than other nurse assistants or LPNs at G M H, because of the fact that they are in hazardous conditions 24/7, not just the three minutes that the, the consumer decides that they're going to act up.
You're exactly correct, Senator. However, sometime in 20, in the year 2000, when, when they were rediscussing the hazardous pay, what happened was, they created a guideline wherein, under certain circumstances, despite that the hazard, hazardous condition is embedded in the job description, they could apply for a hazardous pay when the environment changes. So that's, that's the policy that we're looking at right now.
But when the Competitive Wage Act was done by the HAY Group--
Well, I guess--
Was it not included in there and--
According to them, it is. But this would give us the opportunity, again, Senator--
Ray, I think we have to be very clear with the question. The question was, and you said it was embedded, their responsibilities are embedded, but not the pay. I think we have to be very clear, because, you know, if you're saying it's embedded, because I, you know, I know, I was told it's not embedded, the pay is not embedded.
I cannot, I cannot speak for that, Senator.
These guys could.
But the function--
These guys could.
--the awareness that they're, they're working in that environment is already part of the job description.
The description, yes.
Whether there was a factor added for the value of that, I cannot speak for that, Senator.
And that's, that's actually the whole point that the two gentlemen are bringing up. The vice speaker is saying it should have been factored in. Senator Rodriguez is saying it's not, and that's why we're entertaining this bill. So just to be clear for the committee, it has not been factored in.
Then that would give us the opportunity to review this. And I'm, I welcome that.
Okay. Senator Morrison, you had a, okay. Any other senators? No? Thank you all very much for your testimony. You know, this is a very, very good measure to be bringing forward. We always want to make sure that everyone's being fairly compensated for the work that they're doing, especially when you're in hazardous conditions. Just yesterday, we had to address a measure for our truancy officers, who also put themselves in very hazardous conditions, and they don't get any hazardous pay. So we're going to, we're going to try and move this issue forward on the next regular session, the same as the truancy officers. But I do have one request, and it's the same, the same request that I made to the truancy officers. Because these pay adjustments have not been budgeted for in this fiscal year, would it be okay if we made it effective October 1st for next fiscal year? Because the funding has not been identified yet, and I don't want that to be an issue that holds up the bill or potentially causes it to be vetoed, because the funding source hasn't been identified.
Excuse me, Senator San Nicolas. In behalf of the psychiatric technicians here, we can-- In behalf of the psychiatric physicians here, we can say that I think for me, it should be across the board in mental health. It's just because these clients are very unpredictable. Sometimes you can see that they're normal, later on they're going to just slap you. One time I'm in the rounds with Dr. Archen and Leon Guerrero, we're walking down the aisles and then there is like, and you can see it's really normal clients, but they just walk towards Archena and then slap her. You know, sometimes she's just walking and then grab your hair or they're sleeping and then they just jump on you, something like that. Even in the group home, because these people are working the group home, sometimes group homes, they have only one staff or two staff with, with clients that's really, really aggressive. So we have like clients that spin and out.
So how would we identify those particular employees? Because the way the bill is written is anybody who is exposed to those dangerous or unsafe conditions are eligible, but it's the director of Behavioral Health and the Department of Administration that will identify those of direct exposure. Are you saying then that?
Senator, because they're dealing with patients with mental illness, they're just very unpredictable, whether you're in the unit or you're in the group home, they're very, very unpredictable. You know, when you, every time I go to work, to work, I prayed. Every time when you enter the unit and when you enter in the Department of Mental Health, your ears should be open, your eyes should be open, your feelings should be, you're always alert. You cannot be just sitting there, you cannot just be walking without, you should be alert with your surroundings. Even when you enter in the, when you use the elevator, for example, you're very, you need to be, to be alert, because when there is a client that enter there, you know that they're very unpredictable.
The hazardous pay in 2012, was that across the board like you're saying? Or was that just for limited?
Yes. Even social worker included.
Okay. So what the committee will do, this is the, the committee will commit to this, will research the 2012 existing circumstances and will try and work that in with the sponsor. But as, as a compromise, if we can work together on this, can we make that effective October 1st?
That's why I'm pernys, Senator, because we're working in the inpatient unit, which is very highly, highly hazardous.
Especially because since we're going to include the, the 2012 group, the costs are going to, so we need to definitely wait until October 1st. Can we, can we come to an agreement there on that? Okay, wonderful. So I'll work with the sponsor and we'll, we'll see about revisiting the 2012 parameters and trying to get those applied in this legislation and get it reinstated effective October 1st, working with the budget chairman. Okay? Vice Speaker Cruz. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and conclude the hearing on Bill Number 7-33. We'll move on to Bill Number 11-3 introduced by Senator Rodriguez. An act to provide healthcare professional pay plan category in the government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and reinstate the prior pay plan rate for these positions and mandate a reassessment of healthcare professional salary ranges so as to be competitive based on national standards. Senator Rodriguez, I'll go ahead and yield the floor to you for your opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again for allowing this bill to be heard. Basically, what this bill does, Mr. Chair, is reinstate the health pay plan that includes physicians, healthcare professionals from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. One of the, the positive things that happened with this, with the elimination of the health pay plan was that the existing physicians did not get their salaries affected. However, it's for future hires, it's for, it's for those that, that we want to be able to bring into the department. We're having a hard enough time to be able to bring in our physicians and healthcare professionals. And with now, with the elimination of this and, and the positions falling into the general pay plan, it makes it harder. And so we have these professionals in front of us here and I think that would, would, would even provide us more of a reason why we need to bring this health pay plan back. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. We have Ms. Linda, Ms. Jan and Ms. Suzanne who've signed up to testify. I'll go ahead and start with whoever you'd like to have start. If you can just push the, there you go.
Okay, I knew that. This chair is still hot, I want to say that. Mine's short, I don't know a lot of the history. Some will read and some will just speak. First of all, thank you Chairman and Committee for, for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. We're in the midst of a shortage of physicians nationwide and certainly in Guam public health and we need to think of ways that we can be competitive in the recruitment arena and we're not right now. And just a little historic information, according to July 2014 Becker's Hospital Review, an article by Dani Gordon, she was commenting on the nationwide shortage of physicians and she said, what's really bad is that one in three US physicians are 65 or older and they're getting ready to retire and most of them are primary caregivers. So you think they're going to come here or go somewhere over there? The Annals of Family Medicine projected a 52,000 primary care physician shortage over the next 10 years, especially with the Affordable Care Act that's enacted on, on the mainland. HERSA has identified Guam for a number of years as a health professional shortage area and medically underserved area. Why do we care? Why, who cares how many doctors we have? It matters because there is no pill written unless our pen hits the paper. Without providers, you're not going to have chronic medical care, you're not going to have preventive medicine. And what does that matter? Well, how many hypertensive patients missed their medicines, couldn't get an appointment, didn't try to get an appointment, whichever, and they end up stroking out and they lie at GMH for a month or two. And, you know, $2 versus how much is that? They don't come in with their diabetic foot ulcers, oh, it's going to take a while to get in, I don't have transportation, whatever. And they end up getting amputated. And then what? What's the cost on the system and the cost on them personally? And people need to have access to care, they need to have providers to, to give that. And actually nationwide, chronic medical care, you've got 20% of the population with chronic medical problems and they're spending 80% of the medical care dollars nationwide. Those are the current stats. And we've, and chronic medical care, those people are being missed on stateside in here. Forget preventive medicine, which is where we should start so they don't end up being chronic. But we got to have people to do this. Health of the patients served by Guam Public Health hinges on the availability and care from the medical providers or else you're going to have negative outcomes like I discussed with the, with the hypertension and the diabetic ulcers. What can we do to enhance recruitment? Well, money talks. Salaries are natural enticement to physicians as well as any employee. That's one of the first things, how much do I get for this? Well, if you look at the median salary using the US Bureau of Labor Statistics from 2013, what was the median salary for an intern at stateside? $188,440, almost 190. At the same time Guam was offering starting salary of 108. So big disparity. So if you're sitting there in Florida and you can go somewhere for 200 grand or, or come here for, across the world for that, or even on island, they're going to go in private practice because the disparity is just too huge. Then with the CWA of last year, the, again, let's look at 190 from 2013, now it's 81,000. So we're looking at a $110,000 difference. They're not going to come here and we're already in trouble. The first concept to go out the window is recruitment. I mean, it's laughable. In fact, we were saying if somebody would say, sure, I'll come for that, we're going to look long and hard at their CV because there's some baggage there, no doubt. The next problem is retention. Recruitment's one thing, but when all these people don't come and when they leave, we can't reduce the patient population just because the, the supply of physicians is dwindling. That stays fixed and growing. And that falls to the comrades that are left standing and they get disgruntled, the patients are mad, the staff's mad, everyone's mad, so they leave. They're like, it's not worth this. You know, I'm, I'm working more hours, I'm seeing 50 patients a day instead of 20 or 15, what's, what's recommended and for what? My time's gone and my money's gone and, and, and nobody's happy. So those are the things that, that we need to be addressing. Given all the above, the message being sent to the Guam providers is that the physicians and their work is less valued here than elsewhere. And with recruiting effectively paralyzed, this further negatively impacts the, the morale of the few of us who remain. In summary, physician shortage is a reality in Guam like it is nationwide and I feel that we have an imputed duty to make Guam a more attractive option for physicians and dentists and other health providers to come to our area and to practice and to help preserve and protect the health of our people. To be competitive, we must address, must address the salaries and hopefully sooner than later. As we speak, we're losing another provider and where's he going? Private practice here in Guam. So it's, it's a real problem and, and it probably doesn't impact, you know, a lot of people with insurance, but we've got thousands and thousands of people that we, we treat every day and, and it's just sad. I mean, and you see things that got way out of hand that didn't have to. So that was fast, that's all I've got, so.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, her, okay.
Everybody.
My name? Okay, that's Suzanne Canashiro, Dr. Canashiro. I'm Jana Manglona.
I'm Dr. Suzanne Canashiro and I'm the Chief Public Health Officer at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Prior to my current position, I was a Chief Public Health Dental Officer in the department for 14 years and responsible for overseeing the dental program. When Dr. Anna Cootie Matthew retired in 2013, it placed the Department of Public Health and Social Services in a dire situation because she was the only doctor there at Central Public Health. Public Health had been trying for years to find another doctor to assist Dr. Matthew in the clinic, but without success because of low salaries that were being offered by the government. Physician salaries were still under the health professional pay scale back then and the entry salary for the physician specialist board eligible was 108,726 and 116,107 for a physician specialist board certified. Dr. Matthew was mainly responsible for treating patients with active TB and Hansen disease, also known as leprosy, both highly infectious conditions in the department. After she left, patients would be seen on a rotating basis by physicians that were assigned at the Northern/Southern Region Community Health Centers. They were busy with their own patients at the CHCs, but were willing to work at Central Public Health for a few hours to see TB and Hansen patients. This went on for months until Dr. Jana Manglona, right here next to me, agreed to be permanently assigned in Mangilau in May 2014. As with Dr. Matthew, the department has been looking for another physician to assist with patients in Mangilau, but with the passage of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, it is highly improbable that another physician will ever agree to work in the department. The Competitive Wage Act of 2014 eliminated the health professional pay scale, but kept other plans in place for certain occupational groups, including nursing pay structure for nurses, the education pay plan for teachers, the attorney pay structure for lawyers and the executive pay structures for all heads of departments and agencies of the executive branch. The physician specialists and dental officers were incorporated into the general pay plan and the result entry salary physician specialist board eligible was lowered to 81,522 and for physician specialist board certified down to 86,820. This reflected a 25% decrease from the salary stated in the health professional pay scale, which were already below national standards. The passage of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 only made the situation worse. These are critical positions. The recruitment retentions of physician specialists and dental officers in the department are essential to the health and well-being of the people of Guam. Dr. Manglona sees an average of 16 patients a day, but if a patient has a complicated case, she would need to dedicate more time with a patient, decreasing the number of patients you can see in a day. This is usually the case for newly diagnosed active TB patient or Hansen patient and for a new immigrant on Guam. There are not enough appointment slots to see all the patients that need to be seen. Active TB and Hansen patients are not the only ones that need to be treated for the prospective diseases, but also the people who have had close contacts with them. There are about 55 active TB patients, 20 Hansen patients and 360 close contacts that are treated in the department on an annual basis. Healthcare, healthcare providers from the private sector and the community health centers all refer patients to Central Public Health to rule TB and Hansen disease, which adds to the number of patients that need to be accommodated in Mangilau. Patients needing, patients needing to obtain school work clearances must also be seen. They are not allowed to go back to school or return to work until they are cleared with TB, with a TB program. This results in lost class time and lost income for the individuals. Because Dr. Manglona is the only physician at Central Public Health, patients cannot be seen when she is on leave. Patients have to be rescheduled if the staff cannot find a physician to cover for her, which is usually the case since the majority of physicians are not comfortable treating TB patients because of the complicated workup involved in treating the disease. The lack of additional physicians in the departments had had a negative impact in the services that could be provided to patients at Central Public Health. Since Dr. Manglona is primarily for TB and Hansen patients, other services suffer. There are other types of clinics being offered at Central Public Health, including child health clinics, women's health clinic, STD clinics and family planning clinics. The child health clinic is, is for children zero to five years old and are for well-being checks, physicals and immunizations. The child health clinic is held twice a month because that is the only time a physician is available. The, the women's health clinic is for prenatal and postpartum visits, physicals and pregnancy tests. The STD clinic is for evaluations and treatment of sexually transmitted diseases and the family planning clinic is for family planning services. These clinics are only held twice a week because that is the only time a nurse practitioner is available. If there were more physicians, the clinics would be held more often and more patients can be seen. Because of the lack of physicians in the department, low-income women and children cannot receive the medical care they seek or need. Pregnant women do not have access to prenatal care, clients do not receive family planning services resulting in more unplanned pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases remain undiagnosed and untreated. Clients with abnormal lab results need to be referred to private facilities, causing a possible delay in treatment. Patients who cannot afford to go to private providers may end up not being treated at all. If more patients could receive preventive medical care at, at public health, less patients would be needing to go to emergency room at GMH. The emergency room would only be accessed by patients who truly need to be there. It would reduce the healthcare costs for the governor of Guam because patients would be treated before their medical conditions gets worse, requiring more complicated and expensive treatment. In 1997, Public Health was running three dental clinics, one at Central and one at each of the community health centers. There were seven dentists on staff and they had a robust dental program. Over the years, dentists have left for better opportunities in the private sector. The dental program is now down to one full-time dentist. The current starting salary for dental officer two is 49,897, which is less than what a social service administrator would be making at 55,488. Before the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, the starting salary for dental officer two was 70,399. This was still less than what dentists make in the private sector. I am in support of Bill 1133, which reinstates the health professional pay plan and reassesses the salaries of physicians and dentists to be more competitive with the private sector. Recruiting physicians and dentists to work for public health is less expensive than treating patients in the hospital or paying Medicaid payments to the private sector. It is more cost-effective to invest in public health programs to meet the health needs of the people of Guam. Thank you for giving this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Last is Linda. Thank you.
I, I talk a lot, so I took the privilege of making copies for you all. I'm just going to highlight because I know the time.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Good morning and good, I'm saying good morning, I'm already out of time. Good afternoon, all of you senators, and thank you for having us here. My name is Linda Ompinko De Norsey. I'm the Health Services Administrator of the Northern and Southern Region Community Health Centers. Our mission is to increase primary healthcare services to the medically underserved population. I stand here, like many states in the United States, there's a severe shortage of physicians, dentists and all these other psychiatrists. Health Resources and Service Administration had deemed Guam a score of 17 and this has allowed us to have this score because of our population to our primary care physician ratio. What I'm talking about is the ratio in Guam is 2,883 people per one primary care doctor, which far exceeds the US national ratio of 1,641. So it's almost close to doubling that. 47.2% of our population are below 200% of the poverty level and 20% of our population, as you know, are uninsured. And as the data clearly shows, in 2013 at the health professional licensing area in Guam, we have about 58 full-time equivalent primary care physicians in this island. And for a population of approximately 160,738 individuals, 58 full-time primary care provider obviously is not enough for the entire island. And this shortage is really felt as you already. And this shortage is really felt, as you already all know, among the Medicaid, the medically indigent program, and of course, the uninsured that struggle daily to find a primary care provider or a medical home. And as we reiterate, data can show that 50 dentists are here on Guam, we have eight psychiatrists and nine clinical psychologists in this entire island. Realizing that, yes indeed, data speaks for itself that there is a shortage of primary care providers, not only here on Guam, and as I reiterated, the HERSA has deemed Guam really millions of dollars here for a special program that I'm sure a lot of you have heard of, it's called the National Health Services Corps, which makes us very different in our capability of recruiting doctors. Why? Because this program, with a score of 17 as a health professional shortage area, allows a lot of these recent graduates from the United States to come to a medically underserved area throughout the United States, including Guam, to serve. And in return, they pay the providers the salary or the debt that they owe from medical school. So it's just like being in the University of Guam Protext Scholar, right? I went to be educated off-island, I come back to my island to serve the people of Guam. Every year, they deduct my debt, $3,000 for one year of service, it's the same thing. So that is what has kept us alive in our community health center to recruit. But having a salary such as what we have is really too low, that it entices more of these providers to be channeled to other states that are rural areas, just like Guam. And so, having a salary such as a Competitive Wage Act that is already lower than the competitive wages in the United States is really, really making us even struggle even further. And I cannot reiterate, when I saw the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, I was literally looking for the physician's pay scale. And as Dr. Canashiro emphasized, you can find one for the education, you can find one for the attorneys, you can find one for the directors and the managers and the nurses, but you cannot find one for the physicians. But what did they do? They combined it with the general pay plan, which really, I'm going to give you the reality, I've been really aggressively recruiting. And if you don't believe me, you can look at all the newspapers that we've advertised because you know we've extended our clinic hours. We extended it to 8:00 at night because of an expanded medical capacity grant that we were rewarded, okay? When I'm recruiting, I have to advertise it on the newspaper. Then DOA tells me I have to advertise it on the radio stations. I said, "Where more do you want me to advertise?" Because clearly, I don't have a whole slew of people knocking on our doors to let them know that this is available. We advertised it also on the website. And are there anybody knocking on our doors? No. What we're doing right now, really realistically, is we're sharing all the doctors throughout the clinics. We're sharing them with FHP, we're sharing them with the doctor's clinic, we're sharing them with PMC. I'll give you a true story. Realistically, one of my doctors constantly comes to my door saying, "Linda, my salary is too low. I'm getting paid so low, it is unbelievable." How much are we paying this doctor? $60 an hour. I just recently knew that this PMC doctor that just applied to our clinic is getting $120 an hour at PMC. That's half the salary of what we're offering at the community health centers. I also offered Dr. Olivia Cruz a job because she comes to me and says, "Oh, I want to help anything to help the community. I want to help, Lynn, just let me know what you need." "Okay, doc, we had everything arranged, we're going to give her the application." When she found out that I'm only going to give her $60 an hour, she goes, "Forget it." This is the truthful fact of what is happening. We're extending the hours in the evening, you would think I would get more people applying. I'm struggling right now with the extension of the hours that I have to pay the existing doctors' hours. I can't pay them overtime. I can only pay them additional hours that they work, not overtime. And I'm also paying night differential. You would think it would be much more cost beneficial if I hire more people. Yes, absolutely. But given this age and our real geographic location, far away from the U.S., sure, we have National Health Service Corps, but the problem that we've been having too is when they come to Guam, they get married and their spouse can't find a job here. So they get all frustrated and then they pack up their bags and say goodbye, or their children are not happy here, they're not completely placed. We've had cases like that. I've been recruiting left to right. I'm also competing with the new Guam Regional Medical City. And yes, we have put our hats and say, "Let's all collaborate." We have an existing MOA with Guam Regional Medical City, we're even going to share their nurse practitioners, we have an MOA already signed. Again, I'm waiting for DOA to give me the approval to get these nurse practitioners on board. How long? Since 2014 it's been sitting there? So I'm glad I'm sitting at this public hearing because my ears are already burning, just as much as you are, Senator Cruz. Of course, you contain your composure, good for you. For me, I can't do that. I'm the type of person that I am going to speak up, and I have been speaking up to DOA, believe me, and I didn't stop there. I am telling this to our board members, and that's why our board members are very persistent. We have been trying to recruit for other positions, not only nurse practitioners, but also these other practitioners. And then, we're now getting them to start coming on board. The point that I want to get at is this. We have to collaborate with each other, and we have been doing an exceptional job. As you know, Veterans Affairs is going to join us, we've got Good Samaritan Hospital is going to join us for telemedicine. We've been very creative all the way around, including getting Guam Regional Medical City to utilize their nurse practitioners and soon, their family practitioner. We have to work as a team, and that is the key to success. And that is why you can see all our memorandum of agreements are with players all around in this island. I'm standing here before you, not standing literally, but in front of you, saying that indeed, I am supportive of Bill 11-33. We have to do something to change the salary because $60 an hour compared to $120 and above is not going to get us any recruitment, no matter what type of service that we provide. And soon enough, these patients are not going to be served. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Does the sponsor have any questions for the panel? Senator Rodriguez? Okay. And my other colleagues? I just had a quick question. So, if we move this bill forward, it will readjust the salaries from the Competitive Wage Act that was adopted back to the previous salary ranges, but all of the existing physicians are not going to have any adjustments whatsoever? Is that correct?
Well, right now, they're not budgeted in 2015 to change into the old salary. We have budgeted them based upon the Competitive Wage Act. I would like to think they won't go.
Those are for the existing doctors, they're already getting, they're going to get the same salary that they've always been getting.
Correct.
They're not getting lower.
No.
So any new hires will get paid at the competitive wage because it's budgeted? But do we have any new hires in the system already?
We have just picked up one physician from PMC, but he's only on a part-time basis working 16 hours per week, but we have only given him the $60 per hour. He doesn't mind because, again, we checked, we did a background check, Doc, just to see if he has any problems, and he's legit. So, we want to make sure, because that's required. We have to have court order, you know, we have to have them go through a superior court clearance and also police court clearance. So, I'm hoping that if we do adopt this new professional pay plan, that it will help to alleviate the low salary that is already existing with the existing ones and hopefully get them to at least something comparable to the U.S. national rate. To retain, because retention, as Doc said here, is really key. It's not only recruitment, but also retention. We hope to keep them.
How did we, how did the competitive wage manage to work its way through the system and have all the physicians completely, not only left out, but actually downgraded?
Yes.
How did that happen?
She wants to ask us. To be honest, we didn't know that they were going to eliminate the pay plan. We only noticed that when the Wage Act was passed, that they actually eliminated that pay plan. So nobody told us they were going to eliminate that pay plan. But we're also hoping with this passage, it reassesses the salaries in the existing professional health pay scale to a more competitive pay scale, to become more competitive in the national standard. So it actually does that, says a lot, it will reassess even those salary levels that existed before.
So this bill number 11 will reset us back to what was previously existing, but it does not address even the wage disparities at that previously existing level?
Well, it actually says it will reassess, it will reassess the salaries in the professional pay scale and increase it to the more, to meet the national standard.
It's two-pronged, two-pronged.
Right. So what we'll do then, could we, because I always try to work the budget side out.
Because the existing one in 2005 is not comparable to the U.S. rate. That's what I'm trying to say. And what we've done, also, senators, for your information, we gave them a DISC, Department of Administration, of all the healthcare salaries throughout the United States on all the health centers that is prepared by the National Association of Community Health Centers, and this includes the hospitals. And we paid $165, the board paid for this because of the key management position that we were cited for in our health center when the site visit occurred. So we wanted to help them and expedite, you know, all this process because they're doing research on those three key management staff that we have to respond by May. If we don't respond by May, we can lose some federal funding or we have to do what is called the service area competition, which is a highly competitive grant every single year, and puts us at risk of not being qualified. So this is really serious business. And so, we ordered that, we provided to them at classification, they did receive it, I had them sign that they received it, and they can look, and it tells you the encounters that you have, the numbers, it tells you, are you rural, are you an urban setting, and how many patients you have. So you can compare Guam to what is existing throughout the United States and then get a good scale of what is existing.
Can we make the reassessment process effective immediately, but then the salary adjustments effective October 1st?
Absolutely. Because I have them budgeted and I'm very worried about that too. So I'm in the same wavelength as you are, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the panel? If none, thank you, thank you, doctors, very much, I really appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have Bill number 27-33, introduced by Senator Frank Uggan Jr., an act relative to recognizing that public employees of superior ratings in fiscal year 2002 were not compensated for meritorious performance. I'll go ahead and yield the floor to Senator Uggan for Bill number 27-33.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and also thank you for conducting the public hearing on this particular measure. Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of history in regards to the origination of this concept. There were a number of employees that brought the attention of my office in regards to the application of the merit bonuses all the way back to 1992. And when the original legislation was enacted, there were a couple or a few intermittent years, fiscal years, where in fact, any merit bonuses, as well as in two different situations, the adjustment, pay adjustment, the incremental pay was, increments were deleted as a result of budgetary considerations at that time. So, this would allow for the intermittent years since 1992 in which public employees who perform in a superior status or outstanding, the opportunity to be able to apply equity across the board. So I think the title, Mr. Chairman, is very explanatory in terms of being able to apply equity all the way back to 1992, and I certainly hope that this legislation would receive the support of not only the members of the body, but also the chief executive. One thing I have to say is that I was hoping that a representative and not the acting director of DOA would be able to provide testimony, only because prior to proceeding with this particular legislation, we certainly need to look at the hard numbers and understand exactly what the financial implications would be. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you again for having this public hearing, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. We have no individuals who've indicated that they are going to testify on Bill 27-33, so we will go ahead and conclude the hearing and have Bill number 27-33 considered heard. That brings us to Bill number 46-33. Thank you all very much for your patience, I know it's been a long day. An act at a new subsection 6235 to Article 2 of Chapter 64 GCA, relative to providing a pay incentive to the government of Guam line agencies, the Office of Public Accountability, and the Guam Department of Education employees who have obtained Certified Public Accountant, Certified Government Financial Management, Certified Fraud Examiner, and Certified Internal Auditor certifications pursuant to recognize national standards to preserve the government of Guam's ability to recruit and retain such professionals. This bill is introduced by Senator Rodriguez, I'll go ahead and yield the floor to him for his opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you also again for hearing this bill right away. Bill 46, Mr. Chairman, really seeks to be able to fairly compensate the many accounting, auditing, budget, and managing professionals working for our governor of Guam line agencies, the Office of Public Accountability, Department of Education, and also, as we were, after this was introduced, realizing that also we need to include the University of Guam, who follows the DOA compensation structure. I've always said, our government and public sector employees are really the best and the brightest. And so, but you know, what this does here is ensure that we give them an incentive, and once they obtain these certifications, that they're paid, you know, appropriately. And so, you know, this bill moves this concept forward, and I'm happy that we're able to be able to do that as a policymaker, that's something we want to do for our people, for our public sector employees. But as a father, it's something also, as having a daughter who is her first year college is something we also want to make sure they strive for, is that, you know, when they have higher education, when they go out and get, you know, training for, to enhance their skills, they want to be compensated for it. And so, this is what this bill does, and I'm asking my colleague to support me so that we can fairly compensate our public sector employees who do have this type of certification. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. We're just waiting on the signing sheet. We have first on the list, Ms. Zenny, please begin at any time.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman, Senator Rodriguez, honorable senators. My name is Zenny Assange-Nace for the record, and I speak as an employee for both the faculty and non-faculty section of the University of Guam. If I may interject, my colleague, Professor Rand McNinch, has submitted through email his testimony for in behalf of Bill 46 as well, as a certified fraud examiner. I'm here to give testimony in support of Bill 46. I am a USCPA, and I got certified in the state of California. I'm also licensed to practice here in Guam. I am a certified government financial manager. I'm also a certified fraud examiner and a certified forensic accountant. I am the controller of the University of Guam, and I oversee, among other things, the intricate compliance requirements of over 400 federal grants from various federal funding agencies. I also oversee the implementation of the university's financial management plan that controls our budget based on strict cash availability. And UOG prides itself with balancing our budget based on a lot received from DOA, and sometimes they don't make do for that month or for the following month. But, you know, we have to, we have to put in our foot forward to say, "No, you cannot expense this," to the many deans that come after me. And then it becomes really extremely difficult to control these expenses, especially during tough times, especially when we have payroll at stake. And just so you know, I received all these certifications before I joined the University of Guam. So I'm just saying that my staff can also achieve these certifications if they can, if they want to, because I have a lot of very capable staff that can qualify for the certification. But the question is, they come to me and says, "Ms. Zenny, if I get certified, will you give me more job or will you give me more money?" So it's kind of a lose-lose situation. So, on the faculty side, I teach BA 403, which is auditing theory, to graduating accounting major students. I also teach two of the four parts of a CPA examination review course, and we partner with the Guam Board of Accountancy. And along with fellow CPAs, both current and past employees of the university, we act as facilitators to students wishing to sit down for the CPA examination. And as CPAs, we provide quality instructions to prepare the students for competitive positions in both government and private sectors. So you can see, the university of financial professionals really provide twofolds of accountability and sustainability assistance to the government of Guam. One is employees to ensure financial accountability, and the other as educators and facilitators that provide quality education to students who are future entrepreneurs and leaders of the government of Guam, like Hugh Senator. Lastly, I wish to thank Senator Dennis Rodriguez for sponsoring this, and who said... Lastly, I wish to thank Senator Dennis Rodriguez for sponsoring this, and who set aside his precious time yesterday, thank you for that, to receive and discuss the university input as an educational institution in relation to the merit of including UOG as a recipient of this bill. Thank you very much in advance for supporting this, and si dos maase in anticipation of your support.
Thank you, Zenny. Next, we have Yuka Hetchenova.
Good afternoon, senators. Thank you for allowing me to testify today to support Bill 46-33. I am Yuka Hetchenova, the Deputy Public Auditor. I am also a licensed certified public accountant, a certified internal auditor, a certified government financial manager, a certified government auditing professional, and a chartered global management accountant. I pursue these certifications to gain industry recognition for attaining subject matter expertise. I am required to maintain these certifications annually through continuing professional education courses. These courses keep me updated on industry trends, changes in governing policy and best practices. A certified professional adds credibility and a level of professionalism to the accounting and auditing offices in an agency. Unfortunately, the current pay levels at government line agencies, the OPA and Guam DOE, do not attract and retain certified professionals. There is no incentive for pursuing these certifications beyond personal professionalism. Passing this bill would incentivize existing accounting professionals within the affected agencies. It would also address a significant flaw in the position description for the chief auditor at OPA. Although there are other chief auditors in the government of Guam, only the OPA chief auditor is required to be a CPA. This position is compensated like other chief auditors in government agencies who are not required to be CPAs. It is discouraging and extremely difficult to recruit certified professionals with this kind of compensation disparity. Passing this bill will also encourage certified professionals to consider a career with government line agencies, the OPA or Guam DOE, as well as retain the few who continue their government accounting and auditing careers. Again, I support passage of Bill 46-33, and thank you today for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Yuka. Rodalyn?
Good afternoon, senators. Today I will be providing two testimonies. The first one will be on behalf of public auditor Doris Flores-Brooks. She extends her apologies for not being here. She developed a head code from this morning's, I guess, hearing. She was here all morning, and so she, again, extends her apologies, but I will read her testimony. Half a day, Senators S. Nicholas and committee members. We wish to applaud the main sponsors of Bill 46, Senators Dennis Rodriguez and Rory Rispichio, for recognizing that auditors and accountants should be properly compensated for the professional rigor they must go through and maintain annually to attain and retain their certifications. Since January of 1989, with the passage of Public Law 1952, government attorneys have enjoyed a pay scale that recognizes their certification, but CPAs and other accounting professionals have not been similarly compensated. There are within the GovGuam agencies 13 CPAs and 15 CGFM's. At UOG, there are two CFEs. OPA has three CPAs and four CGFM's. We also have one auditor who passed two of the three-part exam of the CGFM and one who was studying for the CFE. There are five individuals who hold more than one of these certifications. With such a small number of government employees with these professional certifications, the financial impact to the government is minimal in comparison to the added benefit the government enjoys from having professionals with these credentials in its employ. What I hope this bill will do is incentivize more government employees to become professionally certified in auditing or accounting. For clarification, I ask if I, a CPA and CGFM, who is an elected official and department head, would have my salaries adjusted with this bill, when this bill becomes law? I urge the committee's full support of this measure. Thank you, and sensor mente, Doris Flores-Brooks, CPA, CGFM, public auditor. All right. I will go ahead and proceed with my testimony. Dear Senators S. Nicholas and committee members, first of all, I wish to thank Senators Dennis Rodriguez and Rory Rispichio for introducing this bill, which recognizes the need to adequately compensate professionally certified accountants and auditors within the Office of Public Accountability, Department of Education and the government of Guam line agencies. My name is Rodalyn May A. Gerardo, a chief auditor with OPA, the current Pacific Rim Regional Vice President for the Association of Government Accountants and a former president of the AGA Guam Chapter. Obtaining and maintaining professional certifications is not an easy task as it requires time, dedication and monetary investment in one's personal development and ongoing training. With the support and encouragement of my family, public auditor Doris Flores-Brooks and my supervisors and peers, I pursued and successfully obtained the professional certifications of certified public accountant, certified government financial manager, certified internal auditor, certified government auditing professional and chartered global management accountant. For all 12 years I have been with OPA, I have been paid in compliance with the former HAY study pay plan and now the general plan, general pay plan of the 2014 Competitive Wage Act. As chief auditor at OPA, for the past six years, I received no incentive pay for obtaining and maintaining my professional certifications. In addition, I wish to point out that my position as chief auditor at OPA is unique in that it is the only chief auditor position within GovGuam that is required to be a CPA. Yet no additional compensation is afforded the incumbent. Please refer to the attached classification specification obtained from the DOA website. So I'll provide this later on. Professional certifications such as the CPA, CGFM, CIA and CFE of the personnel employed at OPA add credibility to the office and its work products. As the most senior employee at OPA other than the public auditor, and as the public auditor herself has made known at various forums, I can attest that our office continues to have difficulties in attracting and retaining staff, let alone professionally certified individuals. As the CGFM is the premier certification of AGA, I am glad that it is one of the four certifications being recognized for this incentive pay. The financial impact of this bill should be minimal in that there are currently only a handful of individuals who are professionally certified as CPA, CGFM, CIA's and CFE's within GovGuam line agencies, OPA and GDOE. So on my testimony, I list, there are six individuals that I identify, not by name, just the agency they work for and the certifications that they hold. In closing, for the reasons stated above, I believe that the passage and enactment of this bill will help entice more accountants and auditors to obtain their certifications as well as attract and retain such individuals for OPA and other key areas within GovGuam. Therefore, I would like to request the committee's full support of this bill. Sincerely, Rodalyn.
Thank you, Rodalyn. And lastly, we have Catherine, who's been with us all day.
Yes. Yes. Good evening, senators. Unfortunately, I was too busy thinking about my confirmation. I forgot my testimony, so I'm going to read it off my phone. Half a day, Senators S. Nicholas and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. I am representing Division of Accounts, Department of Administration. I am the financial manager, the head of the accounting department, who handles over 3,000 employees as well as over $300 million federal grants, as well as six, over 600 grants and accounting for over $2 billion. The Division of Accounts, Department of Administration, has fallen victim through the years to the cycle of hiring and losing professional staff to autonomous agencies and the private sector for more lucrative opportunities and higher compensation packages. The hiring process is very time-consuming from beginning to end. The gap between the employees' resignation dates and by the time the recruitment process is done is, ranges between three to six months. And for the candidates that we eventually hire, after investing so many hours of training, they eventually leave us to other agencies for more lucrative compensation. We cannot fault these individuals since it's very difficult for us to compete with their offers. And I like to stress that we did, we do receive management audit findings and for emphasizing the need for Division of Accounts to hire qualified additional professional staff to effectively manage and perform our, the fiduciary responsibilities and mandates of the division. Employing quality staff enables us to continue obtaining clean audits and earning national awards such as the CAFRA. However, we are in the danger of regressing from our excellent standards by losing quality employees who are deterred by both our below national average salary levels for certified professionals and our less attractive compensation packages compared to what autonomous agencies and private sectors offers. We highly encourage our current employees to pursue certifications, and the reason being is because, for instance, for example, CPA, right now, to be licensed CPA, you need at least 150 credits. Additionally, you are required to meet the minimum amount of continuing professional education, which GovGuam can realize the benefits of that through training with regards to GASP's, OMB, OMB Circlers and GAAP. The reason why is very important is because by being up, by complying with GASP and GAAP and as well as OMB Circlers, we're able to have cleaner audits. One thing the public doesn't know about is when, our audits really depend, it really determines how much federal grants we compete for with regards to discretionary grants. And I, for a fact, has, can attest to that because when I, when I go to the ICFO meetings, which is represented by the Department of Interior, I did question about that, and they said, yes, with regards to allocating discretionary grants, the cleaner the audits, the more monies your government will be awarded. Another important thing I wanted to mention was when I was blessed to be involved in a standard and poor's ratings presentation, I am proud to say when we had our first clean audit, I asked them, and this is back in 2007, I asked one of the rating advisors, the one that is actually determines what our ratings should be, I go, would the clean audit help us with regards to rating? He goes, absolutely. And of course, I'm sure you guys are all intelligent, you know what that means when we have better ratings? We save millions of dollars in interest expense. So I, what I wanted to reiterate as a result of representing my division is, we want, I wanted to relate to you the importance of having quality staff. I lost the only other CPA to an autonomous agency because of higher wages. There's no incentive right now for my staff to pursue certifications. I am the only certified public accountant, or, and not only that, there's no one else certified in the other professional certifications, only I am. And, you know, it's sad to say that because there's, there's really no incentive for anyone to apply. I mean, based on the applicants that I have interviewed, there's, I really don't get the best and the brightest. So I humbly request your assistance. I know how important it is for the, for the government to continue to receive clean audits as well as to maximize federal grants. Thank you so much for, for your time.
Thank you very much. Senator Rodriguez, do you have any questions for the panel? Any of my colleagues have any questions? Vice Speaker Cruz and then Senator Morrison.
Thank you very much, Kathy. I was hoping you weren't going to testify because at the Department of Administration, you're probably Act Number Three, are you not?
I'm sorry.
Besides Controller, you're like one of the top three or four people.
With regards to overseeing accounting, yes.
But as I look at the Competitive Wage Act, an accountant three gets pay grade N.
Mm-hmm.
That's the three. The two was K and the, no, the one is K and the, and the two is M for accountant. For auditor, one, it's K, for two, it's M, and again, the highest for three is N.
Correct.
But then I also look at administrative services officers, and I see that administrative service and benefit supervisor is N.
Mm-hmm.
And so is the ASO in a department. How was it that the Department of Administration allowed that to happen? And then I go to human, human resources, and the human resource assistant is, starts at M. The manager goes to N, and the administrator jumps to P.
Right.
I know, it's without the certification. And so I'm just saying, what was it that you guys presented? I mean, with all the certifications you have, all that you've been able to justify to standard and poor, all that you've been able to justify to DOA and all of the federal grants, how was it possible that you could not convince HR to convince HAY to give your group a much higher salary?
Sir, with regards to the final outcome for the pay grades, I was not involved. This is, like I said, I'm in charge of accounting. I did my, we did our best to justify our pay status, and it really is, it's like an independent study because with regards to HR and accounting, we're really independent and we don't have, I maintain my integrity. I don't try to call Shane and say, hey Shane, you know, can you please highly consider trying to give us the highest pay grade possible? It really, and I do respect HR, I respect that they do the right thing, and all I can say, we did.
Well, if they've done the right thing, then there'd be no need for us to be here because they determined that the right thing is an auditor three is N.
Yes.
An accountant three is N.
That's correct.
And so, what, what additional, I mean, I may have a lot of gree, but that doesn't give me any HR experience or any HAY consulting expertise to take it to P. I'm trying to figure out how with all of you, I mean, probably the four most brilliant women in government right now, and not be able to convince
Yes.
Anyone in the HAY group to give you guys P.
I understand, sir.
Senator Morrison? Okay. I do have a couple of questions, just to make sure we clear some things up. My first is, you know, I'm looking here at how we're going to determine the pay adjustment. And so for CPAs, they're going to get a 15% increase, and then for everything else, it's going to be a 10% increase. And I had a couple of questions of respect to that. My first is, you know, a CPA is a CPA, right? So if you're a CPA making $80,000, or if you're a CPA making 40, why is one CPA going to get a 15% of 80,000 and another CPA going to get a 15% of 40,000? Shouldn't the CPA designation provide for an equal benefit for everyone of a CPA, not based on the salaries that they're earning? And so my question is, should we go with a 15, should we go with a percentage increase or should we go with a flat dollar increase adjusted for inflation or something like that? Like every, please, please.
The 15% is the number because I think you could be a CPA and be in a management or, depending on the position you're at, not every accountant one, for example, will be a CPA, not every accountant three. So we have CPAs all over the place, but then they'll be in different levels of their fields. So that's why I think the 15% would be appropriate. Because from what I'm interpreting from your question, everybody should just, all CPAs get paid the exact same.
Well, the intent of the bill is to provide for an additional compensation for the certification.
Yes.
And so what we're not trying to do is provide uneven levels of compensation for the same certification. So for example, somebody who's making $100,000 with a 15% increase at a CPA will make 115,000 versus somebody who's making $60,000 with a 15% increase will be making
Yes.
60, 69,000. So it's a 9,000 increase versus a $15,000 increase, but they're both CPAs.
Right.
You see? So I'm trying to make sure that we have parity in the, in the legislation, and so it's probably going to have to be a flat dollar versus a percentage in order for us to have the kind of equity. The other, the other concern that I had was, is it cumulative? For example, 15% for a CPA plus if you have a CIA For example, 15% for a CPA, plus if you have a CIA, another 10?
No.
You know, but perhaps if we go with a flat dollar, it can be, because the more certifications you have, the more qualified you are, and the more hurdles you have to clear in order to be able to maintain those. So perhaps we can make it flat dollar, and we can make it cumulative. That way, we not only have equity across the board for everybody who has a certification, but we incentivize people getting as many certifications as possible, because that's the intent. Otherwise, I might as well just get one certification and forget about the other two. And you guys mentioned you had like four, right? Five? Couldn't even keep track. So I'll work with the sponsor of the legislation, and we'll see if we can probably come up instead of a flat dollar cumulative amount. And then, of course, my last request is similar to every other salary adjustment request, would we be okay with October 1st? That way, we can make sure that it's factored into our fiscal year budget. Okay?
May I ask a dumb question?
Sure.
Because I participated in this at the tail end of the bill, and thanks to my colleague, Kathy, for mentioning to me. Funding, Senator, where does that come from?
Which one?
Funding.
Funding for the?
Yeah, because I was thinking, you know, I was thinking out loud, I'd probably get in trouble for this, but if you're a CPA, you know, I was thinking to, because we're partnering with the Guam Board of Accountancy, maybe they can subsidize a portion of that and give us a certain amount of money to subsidize what you guys have in GovGuam.
I'll leave that to the Budget Chair to be able to figure out where he's going to want to source.
We're being funded, right?
You guys gave the $100,000 to the university.
No, it was $1 million.
$1 million.
But that $1 million, Senator, is earmarked for off-island instructors to come and teach you the感恩.
I understand, and I'm just saying.
Maybe I need to go off-island and apply for that and come back to Guam, right?
But I appreciate the questions, Zenny. What we'll do is, the Budget Chair will figure out where the appropriate funding mechanism will come from for the amounts. But we will need to work more closely with you to figure out what an appropriate flat dollar increase would be for each certification. So again, we'll work with the Chair to come up with those figures. But thank you all very much for joining us here this afternoon and for waiting as long as you did. Really appreciate it. This will conclude the hearing on Bill 46-33, and the overall hearing for all of our measures that we've addressed here today. Additional testimony can be submitted to the Office of Senator Sennecolis at senatorsennecolis@gmail.com, or sent to our legislature's mailroom at, give me one minute so I can pull up our mailing address. It's a long day. You can send it to the legislature's mailroom or deliver directly to my office at Suite 407 DNA Building, 230 Archbishop Flores Street, Hagonia. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attendance here this afternoon. This hearing is adjourned.